Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And we will start with comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda. Yes, Jerry.
I just wanted to mention that there are a couple of questions I've asked. I've gotten an answer to the question, "The new school has been done." I've asked for comparables. To the best of my knowledge, it hasn't been done. I've given you one comparable for buildings like this one. And finally, I've asked for a forensic analysis, analysis of the project where their architect is saying it's a $200 million project. To the best of my knowledge, there's been no independent review to assess whether that cost is real and whether we're getting more than $200 million for the building. And the last question I have for you, as I asked you in an August meeting, if the bond vote is voted down by the community, what would the board do? And you said, speaking to yourself, the answer you gave would be you reassess. I'd like a little bit more clarity on what reassess means. I know what the definition is, but I'd like more clarity on what that means. The community may vote it down. They've already spent $350,000. Are you going to go back and cut the project by $10 million? Or are you going to go back and at least consider the renovations to the buildings which currently exist? Will that still be a consideration? Or have you buried that for good?
Well, first of all, we do have an item on the agenda that I think some of those questions may be answered. Specific to some of those, Jerry, we operate as a board, so I can't give you an answer without board discussion. So I think let's get through the agenda item when it comes up, and we'll see how many of those questions get answered, and then where there might be outstanding questions as well. Thanks. Any other comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Do we have amendments to the agenda?
You wanted to add an executive session to continue conversation on contract negotiations and evaluation of superintendent.
Okay, we're going to add a brief executive session at the end of the meeting. Just make a note of that. All right, and Cole could not be here this evening. I think he's auditioning for something exciting. He did send a report. Do you want to cover that, David?
I don't have that one out yet.
Let's see if I have it. I just barely got it from him, so. Oh yeah, let me use that one. Do you want to do the announcements yet?
Sure. So this is again from Cole and from the high school. He's talking about we've almost finished our second week of school. It's hard to believe. Students are getting back into full swing. Freshmen are finding their classes. Seniors are finally able to park in the parking lot, rah rah, senior parking lot. Everything's been running really smoothly. Open house at the high school will be Thursday, September 12th at 7:00. Great opportunity for parents to meet with their children's teachers and ask questions. Miss Lundy, the head of our career development center, is having meetings and workshops, sessions on Tuesday during FaceTime for any senior on any different aspects of adulting. And the first few have been a big hit. Chamberlain on Tuesday, September 10th, 8:10 to 8:30. Chamberlain's having a welcome assembly. Directly after that, they'll have some time for their new kindergarten families to meet and have coffee. Orchard tomorrow, September 5th, curriculum night at Orchard. And childcare will be provided by the PTO. The junior student rep representative update. Applications have been sent out to all of the class of 2021, and will be due on the 19th by the end of the school day. At that time, they'll send the applications to the interview committee. And he's got some eye wonders in here, I think, back to you, Elizabeth, and maybe Bridget on what kind of next steps as far as bringing those applicants to you. But that's generally what happens is the applicants come forward and have an opportunity to connect with the school board.
So last year, Bridget and I interviewed the applicants. Do we have any other board members who are interested in participating in that process? Looks like that would be the week after the 19th. I don't know the date on that. Maybe the 23rd.
There's just like one session sitting down.
Usually it's back-to-back for about 45 minutes.
If the time works, just to see, sure.
All right, great. We'll let Cole know. Any other announcements? All right.
We are definitely going to, we're going to talk down in superintendent's report just some brief updates on Rick Marcot and Chamberlain. So I'll leave those for them.
Okay, so move on to Agenda Item 6, City-School Collaboration.
So nothing new to report. We do have another meeting coming up on our reoccurring meetings in September, on the 27th. Again, a lot going on between the city and the schools. Conversations around various ideas and information going back and forth from school board and city council. I don't have anything new to report in any of our current or any past meetings.
And Agenda Item 7, the superintendent's report.
So we have two items here. Rick Marcot, again, it's a lot better than it was as we ended the school year last year. Still have some delays, but the pavement has been put down, although there's still some deviation, and there's some coning going off. There's two-way traffic most of the time, and it's been a little bit challenging for people to be responsive to the flaggers. And we've had a couple near misses. And we're just, again, I sent the letter out, it's actually in your packet, just about really asking, you know, moms, dads, guardians, community members to be cautious about traveling in and around that work site. They've been responsive to our in-and-out needs, and we want to be responsive to making sure nobody gets hurt. Anything else to guarantee report? They've done, I think most of the testing has been done now on that corner, thermal testing.
The geothermal weld work will continue through the end of next week.
Next week, okay.
And when does the construction start to widen the entrance and do some work on the other side of it?
Relatively quickly after the Market Street project is complete. So mid-November is the target date for completion.
And I've been on the website to check the weekly kind of construction schedule. Is that still staying updated?
Yes.
For the, I found that very helpful. I hope parents and staff are as well.
Yeah. I mean, we're doing the best we can with, you know, based on what kind of activity. But as you know, sometimes there's traffic that's not 100% predictable, either based on DMV traffic, or Dorset Street traffic, or, you know, emergency vehicles on Dorset. You know, some of that adds to the complexity of our access and egress from the school. But for the most part, again, things seem to be working out okay. And then Chamberlain, again, nothing new to report. We're still kind of in the weight on the grant component, but we're, I actually have put a little bit more information, or asked some questions back to the airport to get some more clarity on, you know, when can I expect more? So I'll keep you posted on that as well.
Any questions or comments from the public? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 8, Master Planning and Visioning.
So we've got Lee Dorr and Roberto Fitzgerald are here, and they've been with us for quite a long time with walking through phases, 1, 2, and 3. This purpose of this night is really to provide the school board with, you know, some additional information and answering questions that you might have. Obviously, the working committee, most, a good chunk of the working committee, Patrick Burke is here, Carsten's here, both Lee and Roberto are here, Bridget's here, Brian's been a big part of that, and myself. There's a few other that I didn't mention, but for tonight, that's the group that has represented the working committee. So without further ado, we kind of have an abbreviated presentation, but again, the point here is to have the board really answer, ask questions as needed. Lee?
Super. Well, we're just going to try and review quickly the pre-bond vote concepts. You guys have seen these before. Just to frame it, we have five concepts that we've been working on since June, when the board directed us to start looking at new construction options. So we have a concept that has a new high school attached to the existing tunnel middle school, and the work that would happen at the middle school would just be infrastructure upgrades to most of the major systems. There's a concept that has a high school and middle school where we looked at trying to do it without any phasing or moves for the students. We also have a concept that has that same plan involved in phasing. And then we have some concepts on each of these scenarios that has a wellness facility to house physical education spaces for each of the schools. Some of the considerations we took in what we're thinking through this was site planning overall from a safety and security, separating buses and cars and pedestrians. One big consideration is, you know, how do you execute a project of this magnitude while you keep the existing schools operational? And certainly, we know from our input from the community and from the board previously that we're trying to limit the phasing moves in any project that we have to try and limit the educational impacts. We have some options where we were trying to keep the outdoor track where it is. We also have some options where we were moving that, and we were looking at the cost-effectiveness of that and the overall site planning aspects of it. And we were trying to preserve some of the mature porset trees out in front of the middle school in some of those options. But to jump right in, Concept 1, just to familiarize yourself, the existing square footage for each of the buildings is up here. The middle school is about 120,000 square feet, and the high school is 151,000 square feet. We've worked over the last four months with administration and faculty to develop a space program, the total number of classrooms and the sizes and everything else that has to go into these. The middle school program, supporting a school population in grade 6 through 8 for about 600 students, is 125,000 square feet, pretty similar to where the existing square footage is now. The new high school in Concept 1 is at 195,000 square feet, and the piece that's important about that 195,000 is we've taken, in that program, all of the physical education components of the program, and we've removed them, and we've placed them in the new wellness center. So the total square footage is 405,000 square feet in this option. The total construction duration is about five years and two months. And the big picture stuff is here, we're locating the middle school down next to Dorset Street. The wellness center would be built on top of the footprint of the existing middle school, and the new high school will go back in what's currently the varsity baseball field. This option was able to keep the outdoor stadium where it is. We did impact the trees out front. One of the things we were looking for in this option in some of our meetings with city planning was the city is interested in looking at developing more of an urban streetscape on Dorset Street. So we looked at, you know, what does that look like if we put our buildings there? How does that impact cost? How does that impact phase? So this option was meant to address that somewhat. The detail in this, on the phasing, and any of these options, after a successful bond vote in March of 2020, which is what we're planning on, there's about 11-month design period where we have to put in, you know, really detailed drawings and specifications that we give to contractors to bid on. Phase 1 involves building the new high school here and the new north entrance, which would be for buses to be able to come in and drop off. It's about a 24-month construction duration for that chunk of Phase 1. Phase 2 would involve moving the existing middle school kids from this building into the vacated high school, once the high school's in the new space. And you'll see that in a lot of these options where you're doing wholesale moves when we're using old buildings as swing space. And the reason we're using full buildings as swing space is our previous iterations where we were trying not to have full buildings for use. We'd have trailers to be able to pull up, and that was something that the board and the community didn't want to look at. Again, this estimated project cost is about $208.4 million, and we'll summarize this in a slide, so you don't have to memorize it all right now. The move-in date for the new high school would be May 2023, and the middle school would be able to get into their new building in October of 2025. You know, once the students are in the new buildings, we would take the remaining Phase 4 and Phase 5, which is any remaining demolition that would need to be done, and replacing where those footprints would be with parking or fields. Concept 2, again, the program is a little bit similar. You'll see about 120 for the new program for the middle school. This one has a middle school gym added onto it, which you can see right here. One of the priorities at this building that was observed was the lack of physical education space currently. So one of the things we were trying to address in infrastructure-only option was to take care of some of the space needs for the middle school, so that's why that was added. The new high school is built in the same place you just looked at in Concept 1. So this is the wellness center, where we've taken all of that PE space that would normally be built with a high school project and would have to get built with a high school project. And we've taken all of that stuff, and we've put it into this wellness center box. And part of this came when we were looking at the need for potentially an indoor track facility to support some of the current programs. And when you put a track, an indoor track, inside of a building, you obviously have to put a big box around it. So to be efficient and economical, we said, well, if we have to build a box to put that track into, let's get as much of the program into that space to make it as efficient as possible. So that's where we've taken all the PE programs for the high school and put them into that space. Middle school still has a separate gym, so the middle school would never have to walk all the way through the two buildings to be able to get to their PE activities. This is a departure from Concept 1, where we're not building along Dorset Street. And this particular option, we weren't able to save the track because we built the wellness center on top of it. We did keep some of the wooded area out in front here. Again, we've got separation on the parking, or bus drop-off, parking in the back. Parent drop-off would be happening in the middle, which is trying to address the current situations where everything is mixed together. This would take approximately four years and five months for construction duration. And again, this is just systems upgrades at the middle school. We're not doing any changes inside the building as far as moving walls to try and deal with the future educational program. So this would extend the life of the middle school building, bring it all up to code, and extend that life up, you know, for another 50 years. The details on the phasing here, similar to the last phasing diagram, we're just going to be building more during Phase 1, so it would be the high school and the wellness center, along with the bus loop and parking. You still have similar moves where we're going to, once we build the new high school, we move those kids in, shuffle the middle school kids over to the high school. That back and forth takes time, which is why you see it at four years and five months. This is a little bit lower in total project cost at $201.9 million. In this, it's about 28 months to complete this first phase, so the new move-in date for the high school in this option would be September 2023, and the middle school would be able to get into their building January 2025. Concept 3, again, this was an infrastructure-only project with the middle school. This does not include a wellness center, so all of those PE programs that we were putting in the wellness center, now you'll see they're back inside the high school. So it went from 195 to 240,000 square feet, and no wellness center. So the total square footage here is less than some of the other options, it's 378,500. This still takes quite a long time to build because there's some big wholesale moves on the phasing, and it's about four years and three months. Similar on the site circulation and drop-off, we're keeping everything on the north side of the site, and parent drop-off and parking over on the southern end of the site. The existing track was able to remain, the outdoor track in this, and the woods were kept in this option as well. The phasing detail, again, this is four years, three months. It's a little bit less on the project cost at $184.6 million. The phasing is very similar to what you've seen before, it's just a matter of how much square footage we're building in each phase. The move-in date on this one is high school 2023 in July, and the middle school is November Option 4, this was another look at trying to create something along Dorset Street. So this is a little bit different. Now we're having the high school getting built right in the existing parking lot. The middle school, new middle school would be built on top of the high school footprint, and the wellness center would get built on top of the existing middle school footprint. So there's two big wholesale moves here because we're building on top of each of the existing footprints. This extends that construction duration because of that to five years and 10 months. It's got a total square footage of 403,000 square feet. And again, that met some of the thoughts from the city to take a look at, you know, what would a streetscape presence on Dorset Street look like and how much would it cost? The outdoor track was able to remain in this. We are taking over with some parking that wooded area that's out front. So this is the longest construction duration, and this is probably one of the most difficult ones to execute from a living-through-it standpoint. That scheduled high school into the new building, similar to Concept 3, is July 2023. The middle school, April 2024. This is $208 million, and we just talked a little bit about that phasing plan. Concept 5 was our look at saying, what can we do to try and reduce the amount of phasing and disruption as much as we can? So this is building the new middle school, high school, and the wellness center on the back of the site, over the existing track. You can imagine, you know, basically building a construction fence right across the entire site, just on the other side of the middle school. Ongoing operations keep going. You've got, you know, a temporary construction entrance at the back. Contract would have this whole area. They get everything all at once to be able to have, and it drastically improves the construction duration because we don't have all of those phasing moves of moving kids around. So this is about three years and eight months construction duration, center. Again, it has the full program at 403,000 square feet. This one, we are building on top of the outdoor stadium, so it gets located, relocated, and it could be down here, it could be over here. Again, these are very conceptual plans. We haven't worked out everything with the fields and where they're all going to be located. That's kind of next phase is moving forward. But it gives you a sense of some big differences between these concepts and how we approach these from a constructibility standpoint. Again, this says the least amount of construction duration in the simplest phasing. That being said, you can see in the orange area here, right, so the contractor's basically getting the whole project, wants to be able to do. That's why they're picking up a lot of the time on that. And while there is, while we're picking up speed by doing that, we are increasing the scope somewhat because now we're building on top of that, so we had to replace that. So some of the money that we saved by going faster, you're eating into a little bit of that because of the fact you've added scope and we've had to add an outdoor stadium. In summary, you know, these are all of the concepts lined up. They range from Concept 3 at $184.6 million up to Concept 5 at $209.6. So all the scopes are a little bit different on them, trying to touch on some of those points that we had talked about wanting to explore. But their range, you know, they're all bunched up within about $23 million of each other for very different scopes of work, and that's really attributable to the logistics of the construction and how we would approach phasing it. Another way to look at this, and we've talked about this before, is if you take the lowest project cost and say, well, what are we getting as a baseline project? So Concept 3, which was the new high school, just do the infrastructure at the middle school, and there's no wellness center, at $184.5. If you look at it incrementally, how do you get from the lowest cost to the most expensive one? Concept 5, the wellness center, the net square footage add, the square footage over and above what we'd normally be putting into the high school PE program is 44,500 square feet. That represents about a $17.2 million project cost increase over Concept 3. The next one is $6.4 million, and that would change Concept 3 from an infrastructure-only middle school project to a new middle school. And that's pretty directly attributable to the phasing durations. It's a lot faster when you're building it all at once as new. And the extent of the renovations, when we talk about going and doing major systems renovations, we're talking about, you know, all of the heating, ventilation, air conditioning, all the electrical, all of the plumbing. So we're opening up the floors, the ceilings, and the walls, and you're really getting down to bare structure. And so there's a significant cost to put all of that stuff back in. And that incremental difference is when we put it all back together, are we putting it back together and putting the walls where we want them to match our educational program? Because we have to pay for them anyways, and that's that difference for an additional $6.4 million. The next one is, you know, the relative speed in which Concept 5 can get done. It's one and a half to two years faster than any of the other options because it's a one-phase clean build, that's another million and a half. Add up all those incrementals, and that's the difference between Concept 3 and the more expensive Concept 5. So some questions were asked about comparable projects. There isn't a lot to look at in Vermont. There's been a moratorium on school construction for at least 12 years right now. Sorry?
A moratorium on the age.
On the age for school construction. So there hasn't been a lot of projects going forward. There are a few that are moving forward right now. The best comparables that we could come up with is Massachusetts, as you know, has a very robust school building program. They have a lot of projects in their pipeline. All of their costs are tracked from the initial estimates by the design team all the way through to bid day and what they get. So some of that information I forwarded to the board. These are some of the highlights of some of the comparables. These are all current projects that are happening right now. In Worcester, they're building a new south high school for about 1,400 kids. It's a little bit smaller than ours at 360,000 square feet, and their estimate was based on October 2018. Their total construction cost, as you can see, is about $172 million. Their project cost, and that difference, just so everybody knows, between construction and project is what we call soft costs. And so it's anything that's outside of what's going to be in the contractor's contract. So furnishings and equipment, which is a big number when you think about having to furnish, you know, a whole entire new school. It includes new technology. The fiber and the backbone is included in the construction contract, but all of the devices and switchgear and all of that stuff is included in soft cost. You've got design fees, you've got management oversight for the community and the board making their two, legal expenses, everything. So that's, it represents on average about 27% of the construction cost. That same 27% was applied apples-to-apples to all of the options that we've reviewed, but I just wanted to give you that kind of background of what's involved there. So this yellow bar at the bottom, because these were all at different times from when our assumed construction state is, we tried to level those out just for comparative purposes. And right now, the construction market escalation is about 5%, somewhere between 5% and 6%. For this illustration, I used 5. So if a project was done in 2018, you're escalating that project from 2018 to our start date 2021, so you can kind of get an apples-to-apples comparison, at least in the timeframe. And with that said, understand the scope is a little bit different, right? This is new, 1,420 kids, a little bit different than ours. But when you break this down to a cost per square foot, it's a pretty good measure, you know, to bring everything down. And so what we're trying to illustrate here is we understand there's a difference in construction in Massachusetts versus Vermont. It's more economical to build in Vermont. But you can see the numbers we're using at $410 a square foot for construction. They're less than anything else that's happening out in Massachusetts, which is what we would expect. It's a little bit cheaper, more cost-effective to build in Vermont. The same with the project cost. And this is for, these are all new construction projects. Massachusetts also has a program for projects that are coming in and say, we just want to update our building, and we want to extend the life of them, and we're not going to move any walls. And our firm is actually, there's three projects that actually fit that criteria in Massachusetts, and we're working on two of them, the renovation projects. And this, again, is an, what we're looking at, there's nothing in here, this is new and repair, so this is based on Concept 3. But understanding our estimate didn't say, you know, what is just the middle school in isolation, and what is the high school in isolation? It's a blended project. So even that said, and our new high school costs are skewing our results higher, you can see our numbers are quite a bit lower than what these, which are just infrastructure renovation projects in Massachusetts. So we're real comfortable with the numbers, you know, that we're showing at a budget level right now. Our goal is to make a decision and actually be able to draw something and put some specifications to give to an estimator that's working with us to give you guys a harder number that eventually you'll take to bond vote. And part of what the board is contemplating is, a lot of the times we do this and the design team's developing numbers, and the owner, you guys, the board, and the community will hire a construction manager during this phase, and they'll come and do an independent take on the same drawings and specs that our estimator's looking at. We put those two together, we reconcile, and that's the number you move forward with. And... And that gives a better sense, I mean, certainly, we do a lot of school projects, we have a vast database of what it looks like, but it gives, you know, kind of boots on the ground in Vermont, a Massachusetts firm that could take on this project to be able to put an estimate on it, just to give another look at whatever we're going to be providing to you in December. So the numbers, I think, you know, are, from a comparable project, I think we're right in the ballpark of where we need to be from a budgeting standpoint. The other piece, instead, people asked, well, you know, how well do you guys do as a firm, you know, in estimating projects versus what they actually come in to bid at? So here's just a list of some projects, I know, over the last eight years that we've been working on, you know, with a value of greater than $10 million. And some of them are new, some of them have new and renovations. These are our estimates, basically at the same level where you guys are right now, and the final column over there, these are actual bid prices. So you can see on all of them, we're pretty close. And, you know, some of them, the bids came in lower, which made everybody happy. And that just depends on, you know, when we're hitting the market and what the competition is like out there. So we spend a lot of time analyzing this stuff, and for us, it's probably the most important thing that we can do as a firm is to make sure that we're providing you with a budget that's going to stand. Once you ask voters for money, you're not going back. And so we want to be able to accomplish the scope that we're all contemplating and fit it into a budget, you know, that makes sense. Some next steps, I'm going to let Rob kind of talk through you, but there's a lot of work happening between tonight and when we'd be coming back to you in December with a more fruitful plan that has a lot more meat on the bones to it. But to get there, there's a whole bunch of work that happens, and there's a whole bunch of work that's going to happen with the community. All of our projects are community-based, right? These are nothing that we're trying to design things for ourselves or monuments to ourselves. We need to be able to work with the faculty and the end users, the students. We need to work with the community. And so what we're representing here, and Rob, I'll just keep going because I'm going. In September, the red stars are our school board decisions, so we're hoping tonight is a decision point for the board. And those blue boxes represent, you know, every week of design development meetings with our working group. The gold stars are when we'd be giving public and community presentations for input, and this is a real open process. So as we develop the design, we'll be making community meetings and saying, this is where we're at. And these are some of the things that led us to decisions that we're trying to get the board to make, and we get that input, and we'll reiterate our plan and keep coming back. So that's a back and forth process between September and December. Lots of opportunity for public engagement, lots of opportunity for public to weigh into what this building's going to look like, what the overall aesthetic is, what are our goals for sustainability. There's a lot of work between now and then. So our goal is to come back in December with a fairly cooked plan of, this is everything we heard, this is what your school project could look like. We'll be able to develop that three dimensionally so you can see, be able to fly you around it with some of the great technology we have today, and really analyze the cost and really analyze the construction logistics, be able to have good conversations with a contractor who could potentially build it. And so we're trying to take out as much of the risk as we can, you know, during this phase. So that would be our work between now and December. After that, you know, the big green star there, success at Bonvot, we still have some schematic design, this initial phase that we're talking about doing, but still have some cleanup work to do, March and April. And there's a long design development phase, it's just more levels of detail into our drawings, and then the final construction documents, which is the real detailed stuff and a lot of the engineering work. And then we get ready to issue the project out to public bid competitively. So that would kind of be the schedule, and that out to bid would be sometime in March 2021, which is what our estimates are based on. So some things that we've all been talking about at the working group level, and we've shared the slide obviously with the community meetings we have, is, you know, what are some of these factors that are involved in this decision? Paramount is education, right? That's what's our primary mission, is we're trying to develop buildings that support what you're trying to do educationally for the foreseeable future. So which of these concepts best satisfies the educational goals that we've outlined? Student-centered wellness, does this support student health and wellness? Each of the options address that a little bit differently. The site, certainly, these concepts are all different. Which is the best? And if you think of the dust settles and contractor, it's gone, design team's gone, and you guys have your buildings there. When we're all done, what makes the most sense from a site planning standpoint and for the long-term benefit of the community? Which option best supports getting community use? It's a real important attribute of it. Logistics and construction impact, and I think I've mentioned this before, we've got this, and it's like the fifth bullet. If you talk to any of our previous clients, they would say, move that one right up to number one, right behind education, because when you've lived through this stuff, it has some substantial impacts educationally. So that decision-making process on which option you go with has some serious ramifications down the road. Obviously, cost is a huge consideration. These are all really big scary numbers, and we understand that. So here we are with questions for you guys. I've got a couple of little slides, and maybe I'll just back up to this because I already heard one of them. Sustainability is an important piece, and just so everybody understands what we've started with from a budget building standpoint is, our goals for sustainability are to at least have a LEED certified building. So be part of that program, walking through the requirements of that to be able to have a certified building. We're all trying to head towards being good sustainable stewards moving forward. Carbon footprint is a big piece of this, and we completely understand that new construction obviously has a large carbon impact upfront, and most of that is the shell of the building. So this was a kind of a quick scenario of understanding. We have a consultant that's part of our design team, he's called the Green Engineer. We've been working with him for about 20 years, and he works on all of our projects, and his, their full focus as a firm is making sure that we're following all the things we need to be from a whole building design standpoint. It's not just one piece, everything has to work together. From a carbon footprint standpoint, there's about 20 kilograms of CO2 impact per square foot for new construction projects. Obviously, this lasts in a renovation because we're not building the shell of the building. The existing building's about 271,000 square feet. Using Energy Star calculations, it's about 1,272 metric tons in carbon language of what we'd be producing. The offset for this, and the real, where the rubber meets the road, is when we're all done, how efficient are our buildings? So we can have a big carbon impact upfront one time, but if we're making our buildings very energy efficient, as a matter of fact, we're trying to make these, one of our goals is net zero in energy use, and the building is being designed for that. The more renewable energy that we can get to get to that net zero, we're going to be able to offset that initial carbon outlay faster than we competitively could in a renovation project. Because in the renovation, there's inherent, you know, problem with getting to 100% efficiency as you can in new. So the payback, and this assumes that we did a net zero building, and that's all determined by the community and you guys' decision-making moving forward, is about 3.3 years to offset that initial carbon expenditure on the new building. So this is something, and this is early in the process, but it just kind of gives you a sense. And the big takeaway is, yes, new does have a big carbon footprint, but new also has the potential to be able to cut that payback period longer than in a renovation project. So this is something that, you know, we'll keep in tandem through the whole design process and be checking back and saying, this is how we're doing, meeting our goals. This is some decisions that need to get made from a budgeting standpoint, but this is what we've built in right now to the budget.
Lee, while we're on this one, just a couple of quick questions.
Yes.
The LEED standard, is that a, is that an evolving standard over time?
It is, it is. Currently, there is actually a LEED process specifically for schools, LEED for schools it's called, and every year, the bar gets a little bit higher. And so when we used to, you know, two years ago, be able to do certain design parameters and achieve a LEED goal, the same parameters today are LEED certifiable coupled. So you got to work harder to be able to get up there. And we're not out here trying to do stuff that is, doesn't make sense. Stuff has to make sense financially. So you can, you know, spend a whole ton of money, potentially on like geothermal wells and all of this stuff, and we'll analyze all that stuff, but it has to make sense. And the return on investment has to be within a period that's affordable and it makes sense. You know, if it's going to cost us, you know, 1,000 years before we recoup any of that cost for that, that probably doesn't make a good sense. But to your point, they do change the criteria of that every year. I had a couple more slides in the Dog and Pony Show, just to show you, to give you a sense of what we're actually talking about in renovations. And so this is a project down in Massachusetts, it's a project sign, we're actually turning it over, we just did turn it over this week, so they just started in there. This was a repair-only project with the state, so they couldn't move any walls, this was just get in there, fix the infrastructure. But the pictures tell a lot. And so sometimes people, when they listen to us talk about renovations, they think of, you know, their kitchen renovation they did on the house, and its finishes and changing doors, and this is serious stuff, you know, so these are pictures of the project of when we went in there and we stripped everything out, and then we're starting over. So that picture over on the right is, everything's been pulled down, right? Because we have to put in everything in the ceiling, it's a new sprinkler system, if you got to put a sprinkler system in here, which there isn't one, right? All that ceiling has to come out. And once the ceiling comes out, right, then we want to be able to run our new ductwork up there and new electrical. Same thing with the walls, if we don't open up the walls, you're going to have like that strip you see right there behind you, that power strip. And you think about that over the entire middle school, that's what we would be looking at if you weren't opening this stuff up. So it's pretty intrusive, and usually what we're left with is we've got the structure. And the windows are getting changed out, the roof is getting changed out, we're opening up all the stud walls. So that's, I'm just trying to illustrate, you're going so far in a renovation, trying to quantify, you know, what is that extra step to get all new? And that's kind of where that 6.5 billion number is. It's pretty substantial, pretty intrusive, you know? Even when we say we're going to keep the slab in here, you know, we have to upgrade the plumbing, and the plumbing, you know, is in the slab, so you got to crack it open. And then when you put it all back together, you know, it kind of looks like Swiss cheese. So I'm only bringing this up, we do a lot of these projects, and it certainly can be accomplished, and, you know, what we've presented, you know, in some of these options, we can execute. It's just, everybody should go in eyes wide open about, you know, what's involved in this stuff. Now I'm going to go back to my question slide.
Okay, Bridget, maybe you can just take a minute and clarify what action is being requested of the board tonight?
So what Doran Woody are really need for us in order to be able to execute on a March bond vote is they need a direction from us tonight about which of the five concepts they should be designing toward. So that doesn't mean that this project in March that we vote on looks exactly like the layout that they have for Concept Five. It means all of that community process goes on for the next couple of months. But we need to tell them, is it Concept One, Two, Three, Four, or Five? Or potentially something different, if we all, you know, five agree on something different that they should be designing toward, so that they can go and get a deeper cost estimate and actually help us work through the process for arranging potential funding and get all the documents in order for a bond vote in March. The reason for March versus November, if we wait until November for a vote, which would be the next logical time to wait for, to do a vote, the main reason is that we lose more than just those months between March and November because of construction timing and all of that, you lose over a year on the project. As we alluded to in a bunch of slides and many of the presentations, we've seen costs escalate between 5% and 6% a year. So if we lose a year on the project, we're talking about another 5% or 6% on top of all these costs that we've estimated so far. And that's the cost of more than new versus renovate on the middle school, for example. So it's a real cost to waiting that long. And, yeah, so basically, they're looking for us to give them a direction to go and design toward and to use as the basis for conversations with the community and community input. Is there anything else that you need specifically from us tonight?
I think that's what we're looking for, is just some direction to be able to keep developing this, and you guys have done a good job of winnowing these choices down as we go along, and that's where we're at. We can't take these five concepts and develop them all to that level that we need to, to be able to have that kind of, take your pick of which one of these options and take it to Bonvot. There's just, there's not enough budget to be able to do that, and there's not enough time to be able to do that. So we're looking for, you know, we've done a lot of work, you know, over the last two and a half years, so we're trying to get to a point where, what is it that we need that's going to help, you know, make that decision to try and put a little finer point on which direction that we're heading in? We're not asking you to pick the number, it's not, what these numbers are, they're very relative to each other for comparison purposes, but we just want to pick the concept of the option that we're going to be developing further to come back to you with, you know, this is the budget that we should be recommending to present to the voters in March.
And the community process, in my mind, is really the community weighing in on what the priorities are, you know, what is most important, you know? And there are, obviously, there are going to be trade-offs as people, you know, we talk about the financial aspect of it versus some of the things that we want in this new building as we get deeper into the design. And until there's something for people to react to and really work around, it's hard to have those conversations about exactly what those trade-offs and what those priorities are. And so we sort of need to get to that next stage in a timely manner if we want to be ready for March.
Can, Lee or Rob, can you speak to what kinds of interactions you've had with the community and what kind of feedback you've had that have allowed you to, as Bridget said, sort of reprioritize or prioritize as you're going through this next phase? Can you just kind of speak to, because I know there's a lot of community here, but I'd also like to understand what we'll be asking from the community during that time period?
It, so a lot of what we're going to be doing is, we need something to be able to develop a little bit further. We've showed you our nice cartoon sketches of, you know, what footprints could look like. There's a lot of work that thought has been put behind those, floor plans, adjacencies of spaces. So it's an iterative process. So as we start to develop those, we'd like to be able to show them to the community and have them react to it and understand, you know, these are some good points for this option versus this. What do the design aesthetic look like overall? What are we trying to do here for a project? They're going to be involved all the way through in shaping those big decisions. It's not just something that we're going to say, here's your building, here's the cost, go vote on it. This is a community project, and you're going to have a lot of interaction with those groups as we proceed through this process.
So the next steps for us is, you know, we will be, once a decision is made, will be bringing forward structural engineer, civil engineer, mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers to all contribute and be a part of this process moving forward. So we'll be identifying, you know, recommendations on site circulation and how buses come in and out of the site, so we'll be looking for some feedback on that as well. You know, pathways, biking paths, walking paths in and out of the site, the athletic aspects, you know, which spaces make the most sense and where. I mean, the, on a series of eight options that we did during Phase Two of the study, we gathered together with faculty and staff, but we also had those visiting sessions where we had over 80 community members weigh in on these concepts. So we had these concepts that we had prepared, but we haven't really had a chance to dive into exactly, you know, how they're organized and what spaces would be available to the community at different points or aspects of the day and after hours and so forth. What are the security questions that people have on, you know, what kind of improvements are you including in the building? Or thinking about, you know, security of the students and making them feel safe during the day? You know, there's, and then materials and finishes and durability questions.
Mechanical systems, you know, we'll present, you know, here's four different options that are very different to heat and provide cooling to this building, and these are how they weigh against the sustainability goals that we have. These are how they weigh against some of the ongoing operational expenses. These are the initial upfront capital costs. So that's the input that we're getting through on all sources. So that's the input that we're getting through on all sources of this.
And there's a number of things that we've talked to faculty and staff about. For example, you know, we've talked a lot about science, technology, engineering, math, and art, right? And locating a, one of these labs that would allow for collaboration between art and science to happen. You know, is that something that the public is interested in? What opportunities does that offer to the community after hours? You know, where does it make sense for that to be located in the building? You know, we've got a black box theater included in here. Is there other opportunities for a local performing arts group to potentially use that space as well? You know, so there's a full gamut of questions and things that we hope to collaborate with both faculty, students, parents, and community members in this process.
And it doesn't stop just between now and December after a successful vote with another 11 months of, you know, going through that same process. So it is a little bit of a, you know, a hurry-up offense right now just because of, that's just the nature of these projects. But there's still a lot of time for, you know, continual community input.
Yeah. Just touching on that, so there's different phases, and some people might, may or may not understand the process that a project goes through in terms of design and construction. So this phase that we're in right now is what we call schematic design light because we're not, we're not doing everything that we would normally do in a schematic design phase, but we're doing as much as we can with the budget that's available to provide as much information as we can to the cost estimator so that we have a solid figure to go to the voters with. And where you see that little sliver between bond vote and beginning DD phase, that's where we come back again and say, okay, this is what we talked about before the bond vote. Is everybody still on board, you know, before we jump into the design development phase?
This is what we showed you as a picture of what it could look like. Are we still happy with that?
Right. And then, and then the design development, you know, says, okay, we're happy with the layout of the floor plan and the adjacencies of spaces, and we like where everything is put. Now let's dive deeper and look at, you know, colors and finishes and carpeting and exterior materials and, you know, how big are the windows and, you know, all those kinds of things are more detailed. So it's design development. It's taken that next step of designing the building. And then in the construction document phase, pretty much all of the design input is done at that point. And we focus on really zeroing in on the construction details and fine-tuning everything in order to hand it off to a contractor to build. And so that is a long process. It's a big, big facility. And many aspects, as you can imagine, there's, we probably have eight or 10 consultants from various disciplines that are all working on this or would be working on this. And then issuing it out to bid, you know, to a competitive bid process. So like Lee said, there are other opportunities after the vote to also weigh in.
Other board questions?
Yeah, I guess I'm curious if a decision were made, how malleable is the choice that we then have, right? So if you're a board member who's concerned about this is happening awfully quickly, what else can still be done? Or if you're a member of the public who wants to know, how much is my weighing in going to affect things? There's probably no way to quantify this, but is there a way to qualify? You know, say you choose option 5, how much can things be moved around, changed, et cetera?
The most important thing is building the budget. So that's our primary goal, is to be able to come up with a representative project that meets all the needs that we've heard and be coming up with a cost. And we're presenting to the voters, this is what it could look like, knowing we still have an 11-month period after where we're going to be changing potentially and tweaking that. So there's still a lot of opportunity to be able to have that input and change. But we just got to get to a point where we can make a decision and just keep moving forward. There's a lot of different variables that can change. And you can, even after we set the budget in December, if you came back and said, well, that's the number and that's what is voted, but we don't necessarily like some of the materials choices that are in there, now we're working with a budget. So we have to make decisions, you know, if we're going to spend more on one component, then you've got to take something else out of another component. So we're going to have all of the frameworks to be able to make decisions with saying, we want to spend a little bit more on this because this is a higher priority for us that we found out through these community interactions, and we've got to take something else. But it's setting that budget that we all understand we're going to have to live with it.
There were a couple of detailed budgets sent at the request of some board members or, and I don't know if those were going to be discussed or not, but do you recall the ones I'm speaking of, Bridget?
Well, I did have a question related to that. I don't know if this is where you're going.
Are you talking about budgets for other districts' projects or are you talking?
Other districts' projects, yeah.
So you're talking about Burlington, Manouski?
Well, I want to talk about those two because those are neighboring districts with bonds that were recently approved. And I think there's, I thought it was important for our board and our community to understand the scope of recent bond approvals by neighboring districts as well as what has been publicly available relative to impact on property tax rates, at least what was available early on. But there was also some detailed quotes for, I think it might have been Massachusetts projects, and it was maybe two or three pages with a lot of fine detail.
This is what was summarized by Lee. He took some of those and summarized those there so that we weren't looking at the line item.
Okay. So my, my question was, is that what the detailed, I can't remember the ones, I could look them up if, actually, I can't, my phone's tired. We got some detailed budgets. Is that the level of budget we would get after this phase?
So the 78 pages of mind-numbing construction cost estimator?
That's ours. No, that's ours. That's our estimate so far. So to be clear, it's not just that this is a back-of-the-envelope sketch that Lee and Rob have done in their office, the 209 million for Concept 5, the 184 for Concept 3, for example. Basically, they've taken all the work that's been done so far. So there's like a space plan, for example, that says this is what we're estimating in terms of number of classrooms and how big those classrooms are. And that gets us to a total square footage. And here's the phasing that we're thinking of high level right now. And there's a package of stuff that we've gotten from, I did not share that entire package of actually what went to the cost estimator because it's a lot of stuff and a lot of it's sort of unintelligible to the layperson. But a lot of stuff went to the cost estimator. That 78-page report that came back that sort of said, these are the line item, rough line item costs for Concept 1, and these are the ones for 2 and 3 and 4 and 5. That's the level of detail that we know so far based on, you know, the back of the envelope. The part that is back of the envelope is the space plan. We need to finalize that space plan so that we can dig deeper.
And I think what I saw was examples of detailed budgets for two other projects, but it looked like it would be the level of detail that would result from, you know, picking a specific concept to take to the next level.
Right.
I'm assuming that's accurate. And Brian, did you have an add-on question to that or?
I think so. This is actually about the 78 pager.
Yeah.
Yeah. So for options 2 or 3, when there are renovations happening to the middle school instead of a new build, there are things happening that aren't technically renovations, right? Like there's going to be some addition for the middle school gym, which I think is totally necessary. But for people who are saying, what about if you just did the systems that are going to fail? What if you just did the stuff that you really needed to? What if you're not doing a gym addition? What if you're not doing skylights? I was trying to look through it. It doesn't look to me like the gym addition actually adds that much to it. But is there any way to quantify those things that aren't strictly renovations to the existing building and how much they're adding to that option? You know what I mean?
Sure. And that would be an exercise in itself to try and pull some of that. And that's the problem is, you know, with a renovation project, you really need to delineate what the scope of work is, right? Because the devil's in the details. And even trying to compare this project in our renovation scenario to Burlington or to Manouski, you know, understanding what the scope of work is, is all of where, it's where all the cost difference is. So yes, there is a way to do that. And I think by and far the most part of what we're doing with the middle school is systems upgrades. And then it's kind of like I talked about, once, you know, if we have to get up above the ceiling, you've got to pay to take it down and put it all back up. So there's stuff that is inherently a part of it. If you were trying to say, we want to boil some of that down, we'd have to look specifically at what you're talking about that you want to pull out. Because the renovation scope was pretty limited to infrastructure systems and everything we're doing to intrude to get to those systems, to patch it all back up.
And if the renovation of the middle school is something that is of interest, you know, we typically, in a project like this that is infrastructure renovation only, we typically like to partner with a construction manager or a general contractor to talk through, okay, this is the scope of work that we're planning to do. You know, what do you guys think? You know, those are the guys that are constructing, that are dealing with it day in and day out, how to phase it, where to locate, you know, their storage boxes, how, you know, how they're going to have the different trades kind of come in and do the work, and what's really going to be impacted. Because we have an idea, we have a sense from our own perspective, but the contractor who's got to rip apart stuff and knows that when he's ripping apart stuff, he's going to impact something else, you know, we like to have that sort of sense of assurance that, so that would be something that we can get into, you know, especially if you're saying, well, what if we didn't do that? And then we can review that with them and say, all right, so does that seem feasible? Because sometimes we'll say, well, let's save the lights. Let's take the lights down, save them, and then put in the sprinkler and put in the new ceiling and then put the existing lights back up. You know, does that make sense? And sometimes it turns out that you guys can get a really good deal on new lights. And since you're already doing, taking the work of taking them out and putting them back in, sometimes it doesn't make sense to salvage them. Because you're, you know, a couple of dollars more and you've got new lights, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I ask in part because I think there have been some sort of discussions or comment threads or whatever you want to say about like, why do you want to spend this kind of money to get natural light into a building? And if the answer is that natural light isn't adding that much to what you'd have to spend anyway, I think that's a fine answer. And if it's true, you know, the roof has to come off, it's pretty cheap to put in skylights, I think that's an effective way of talking about it and sort of rebutting that point. And are these things that aren't necessarily just being done to the, what has to be done? They're not adding that much, it seems to me, from going through here, but maybe I'm misguided.
Right. Yeah. There's certain choices that have to be made. You can't avoid some things when, I keep going back to that ceiling thing. I don't want to take the ceiling down, but I do need to put a sprinkler system in there. So it's part of the package in a renovation project. To get there, I got to buy that extra stuff. And, you know, to your point, I got to pull all the roof down and expose everything. And, you know, what does it cost to drop in a skylight, you know, over a classroom? And that stuff, if you guys wanted to pursue a renovation option, we can, that's part of our next phase, right? Is diving into the renovation scope of work in more detail and saying, you know, what is the bare bone, what is it that you guys want, you know, to accomplish? So that would be part of the next.
But those sort of improvements in the renovation option are a relatively small part of what we're talking about.
Yeah. I mean, if you think about the overall larger project, you know, the big-ticket items are the site work, for example, the, in the larger scope of renovations, when you, like a facility-wide type of renovation, like all the electrical, all the HVAC. When you start pinpointing specific things, those smaller items like skylights, for example, are a smaller ticket item. So instead of 184 million, maybe it's 183, 6, or, you know.
Thanks. Yeah, understood.
So do we have anybody who can speak to the Manouski and Burlington projects, either in scope or otherwise? I know I pulled some things out, but.
I'll take a stab at it.
Okay.
And again, we're not working on either of those projects. And so the information that they've put up on their website is publicly available. They did publish a construction budget that they put together. And it's Burlington I'll focus on, for instance. They're looking at approximately 160,000 square foot addition that they're trying to wrap around their existing gym. And then they want to renovate about 115,000 square feet of existing space. It's not completely clear to me what that scope is for the renovations. They did articulate, you know, wanting to do some handicap compliance and fix some windows and stuff, but it's not really clear exactly how far they're going in there with infrastructure. There doesn't look to be too much site work, you know, as part of that project, just whatever's related to just around the building, footprint itself. And that, at $70 million, you know, that breaks down and it's obviously a lower cost per square foot than what we're proposing, but the scope of work is much different than what we're supposing. And then also, the big-ticket item in any of these options that we've shown you, the site work costs that we have, right? Because we're impacting not just buildings, but in each of those options, it's new parking, new driveways, new fields, new, our site work costs range from $13 million for Concept 3, you know, up to all the way up to like $20 million for Concept 5. Those are baked into construction costs and they come out in the cost per square foot. If you don't have any site work, Manouski, you know, or very limited with Burlington, that's also going to skew your cost per square foot, you know, lower. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison by any means. And we're not, you know, completely sure exactly, nor do I think honestly, they are yet, you know, until they go through some of the scoping process of what they're going to be able to tackle under that renovation project for the money that they voted in.
They haven't gone out to bid yet, so you don't know how the budget's going to be in relation to the bids until they come out.
Manouski's project's a little bit different. They're doing some, not full infrastructure upgrades, but they're piecing some additions together to connect. They have a K through 12 building. And so, you know, some of it.
Pre-K through 12, I think, actually, because I watched their little video on RETN, and they're expanding their pre-K program to sort of double its size. So yeah, they're pre-K through 12.
And they're all, you know, on one campus, and I think there's like 800 total, you know, pre-K to 12. So that's a little bit different project. They're not doing full infrastructure. They've had buildings, you know, that were added, built in 2000, you know, some of them built in the 80s and some of them back to the 60s. So depending on what portion of the building they're working at, they're doing different scopes of work. So again, it's not a good apples-to-apples comparison. The best we could come up with were, you know, some of these slides that I showed you where, you know, especially Westboro and Triton, both of those were gut infrastructure projects. The Blue Hills project, again, that's more like Burlington where they weren't doing all of the systems. You know, we're going to replace the roof and the windows. You know, our heating system's okay, but we're going to replace ductwork, but our boilers are great, that type of thing. So renovation scopes can vary all over the place.
I think one of the barometers I know I was looking at was sort of the infrastructure investment baseline that we've referenced at 55 million. So I know the public documents indicate that 30 million of the 70 million bond in Burlington was for deferred maintenance. So again, not being aware of specific details or, you know, what was involved in that. That, from an order of magnitude standpoint and for the fact that we're talking about cutting across two buildings, it did give me some validation that that was within the scope of reasonable based on what they had identified. About half of their bond is deferred maintenance. And then another big chunk of it, though they didn't identify it, was specific to ADA compliance. So that was helpful to see at least that identified in their public documents.
Yeah. Manouski broke down, they had, it was not as detailed as that, but they said that about half of their program, or half of their bond was for current program. So trying to do some small renovations to make sure that the building was supporting the way they were teaching. So for example, adding some pods and, you know, sort of rearranging some walls to make sure that certain grade levels were getting the benefit of that. So about half of their bond was for that. Most of the rest, the other half, was for facilities repair. So again, about half facilities repair. There was a small sliver that was for growth. So they're expecting growth in the number of students in Manouski because they're using, can't remember the name, it's a more widely available service than the one, we sort of hired a private demographer that, you know, continues to update. I can't remember, you might know David. But their demographics basically show that they're expecting an increase in the number of students across the district as well. So there's a tiny percentage in there for growth of that building as well.
Other board questions, comments? I want to open it up for public questions or comments as well. Jerry?
So just, is the information that I'm looking at right now, is that available on the website, which is posted in the left-hand corner?
Yes.
Okay. And the other slide, which had more information about comparables, where does that information, no, it had probably 15 listed yet, I think that was it, where does that come from?
These are our projects. These are our projects.
Does this, is this gonna be available, sort of on the school board website, so people can look at it?
I think we're putting everything-
We've been posting everything, Jerry, we will, yeah.
Well, this presentation can go a lot, the other thing is if you want the level of detail, the, there's sort of this, spreadsheets and spreadsheets of the Massachusetts schools that is available on, you know, the Massachusetts School Building Authority website, and we could repost that, I would imagine, because it's public information. So we could have that as a bit of information on our website as well.
Yeah, just a question on the Shelburne Community School, I saw that, it said, the total square foot was 120,000, but new is zero, and then there's 30,000 renovation. Could I get a little bit more explanation of that, since you guys said it?
Sure, it's, the overall building there is 120,000 square feet, our project focused only on 30,000 square feet.
I see, okay.
Yes?
Yeah, I just, I sent an email this morning-
Yeah, sorry, Dan, we haven't gotten back to you.
No, that's alright, I'm gonna recap one of the questions, and I think one of the community concerns, we have a lot of things hitting us at once, big reappraisal coming up. And I guess I have a question for the Jordan Witter folks. Do you have any formal communication with a consultant who's working for the city on the recreation center question?
We have held a meeting with the city's consultant and the city's staff that's working on that project initially, with our working group members, to talk about the program for the school, as it relates to what the city's contemplating for, the city rep, to make sure that we're, as we continue to develop these on kind of parallel tracks, that we're not duplicating and creating, you know, redundancy that's not necessary. So I think those first meeting that we held was, you know, understanding that these are the programs and these are driving the school side of the programs, from a scheduling and a program need. And, you know, the city on that side was saying, yes, we hear you and we understand that. We also have needs, and it's all of these kind of recreational needs, people are trying to access that at a lot of the same times. And at a lot of the same times, the school program is taking over what the school's gonna be using, when others from the rec are trying to access and it wouldn't be there. So I think there's gonna have to be continued ongoing conversations to make sure that, you know, whatever's being proposed by both entities, you know, we're limiting redundancy and trying to right-size the program. So those conversations have started, and I think they're gonna continue to-
The challenge is you guys are put in a hard spot, because you're trying to go up to this firm cost, to meet the deadline for the bond vote. And meanwhile, the city's, I'm not sure, doing exactly, is collecting some input, but we'll see what, you know, it's just, you could say, it's maddening. And a more direct, the whole, and I went to the visioning in April, it was very interesting, saw lots of nice pictures, ooh, this is all great, and I get it, you know, one of the best, and all that. The challenge I have is we're doing all these comparisons with Massachusetts, which is completely, I assume, since Vermont's school funding system is so unique, I assume there isn't much comparability in terms of school funding mechanisms.
No.
And then I want to try to go back in detail on some of the comparisons and look at the grand list, because I, again, it's my, I made this point, you know, on Facebook page, like, what are the must-haves and what's the Taj Mahal? And I think a lot of this is like, so we had this meeting in April, we saw lots of pictures, and then summer happened, and now it's like, oh, by the way, we're adding a wellness center. And so I know you guys, the school board works hard, and you hear from meetings all the time and all that, and then now we're sort of beginning with this. And you've heard me talk a lot about process on prior issues? Please, I'll just say, you gotta do process a lot. And if it means a community meeting on a Saturday, that's what it means. It means having programming so parents can drop their kids off to run around, that's what it means. City, and I'll say this now, I like all the city folks, and I get it, they slapped up, tried to do a 1% tax gridlock, a highly regressive sales tax on us. And they got shot down, and I'm not surprised, because it was done quickly. Oh, here's a check, here's a shock, let's get it funded. And they paid the piper for that, so now we're backing up. So if you're gonna do this, and it looks like a fait accompli, that it's gonna be a $200 million plus or more bond vote, and you guys unanimously decide that, you know, it wasn't a good thing. Just do that so we can make informed decisions, what is the cost per taxpayer, how much the state can, and all these factors, because nobody knows. And, you know, if those people have kids in the school system that are 12-year-old, you know, we're more engaged in this, because our kids are here, et cetera. But for a lot of people, they don't know. We've also got a freeze in development in this town right now, so what does that mean? You know, if we don't build any new affordable housing, how are we gonna have anybody with kids? We just have retirees and transplants from elsewhere, easily slap down half a million for a house. So, anyway, that's my thoughts, just inform, keep putting stuff up on the web, do some good, real financial comparisons for people, so people can make informed decisions.
I can't answer one of your questions, Dan, right now. The state will be kicking in nothing.
Well, that's relative. So the state, this new building and renovations roll into the education budget, and that's subject to income sensitivity, and that's the state sending money back. And I have asked the state to tell me how much money they're sending back in income sensitivity, and how much money South Burlington is sending to Montpelier in terms of tax dollars, so I can get a hard number of what's coming back versus what's going there, and I haven't gotten that information yet.
And I will say, the Winuski and Burlington bonds identified taxing pack based on income sensitivity and otherwise, so that, that's some of the area that we need some specific expertise that we're gonna be talking about, have been talking about, and will be talking about later in this agenda.
I'll tell you what you already know, this is a train moving very fast, and the majority of members of the community really don't know the details of this project yet. They know it's a big number. And it makes me very, very nervous that you're moving so fast with this threat of a 5% to 6% increase, when the majority of the community is really unaware of the magnitude of the project and the details. I just think it's a dangerous approach.
And I think what we're talking about tonight is getting to the point where we can provide a level of detail and link it with a specific number, because right now it's still concepts.
I do think, if the renovations is still a possibility, you need to make sure you present that to the community at the same time as you present all these proposals. Don't go to the community and say, these are your five choices. I think that's a mistake, just like other issues in the community have been a mistake, which were not handled unless they could have.
Other comments or questions from the public? Yes?
I just want to say that I do trust you as a board, and I think that you're going to make the right decision, and, you know, with the city, you could talk about Market Street for 30-plus years, and now they're doing it, and it isn't anything like we wanted. So I think that we can all trust this board to put a concept forward so that we can all see actual pictures, actual footprints, and get behind it, and be excited about. So, thank you.
And at the end of the day, the community's gonna make the decision, regardless of what concept the board moves forward. Other questions, comments? Yes?
A comment about renovating as opposed to new. Another piece of renovation is it may be less expensive, but there's also, and as I think we said at the end of the meeting, the systems are antiquated and we are required to change them. But if you're renovating, you're also gonna be disrupting the kids, because as you pointed out, walls are torn down, ceilings are lifted. And so I know my children just started middle school, and I know that they would be the ones who'd be sitting in the trailers for a year or two. So it's also being aware that if you're gonna renovate and not rebuild, that it's going to be expensive anyway, not as expensive as new, but you're also gonna be disrupting education as well.
I think I'll add to that, that the phasing of how it's done and the impact on the students is very real. And because, because not only is it a, it's a large tax investment for community members, but it's a time investment for today's generation, and it's investment in the future generation. And I think that's something that South Burlington is sort of known for, is the, you know, schools are the heart of the community, and it is part of our identity and why people move here. So it's an exciting opportunity that we have, in that this is the decision-making point of what we're gonna invest in moving forward, and what this is gonna look like, you know, for kids 20 years from now. And, and so it's an exciting and a critical moment, and at the same time, it's coming at sort of the expense of the kids right now. So, you know, I'd be eager to hear what the discussion is, and knowing that sort of minimizing impact on the kids is, would bump up there, I think, on my list of priorities, too.
Isn't a lot of the renovation be done during the summer when the kids aren't in school? And if you're pulling down wires, is that a lot of effort down-
The magnitude of the, the magnitude of the renovation, correct me if I'm wrongly in, what we know is that magnitude of that is too long of a period. We know currently, you know, it's difficult for us to get any sort of stewardship work done, Jerry, during this, during the summer. I mean, just trying to get our buildings back up and cleaned, or waxed, or gym floors reconditioned, I mean, we're pushing the time limit sometimes to get that work done in the timeframe that we have.
It's really about eight weeks.
Elevator, the elevator is probably the, one of the best examples at the high school. We had to do that over a two-year period, that was just the elevator. Again, renovating, opening up that, you know, was a very elaborate process to try to do that, again, several years ago now. But a lot of people said, why can't we just get that done in the summer? Well, too much work to be done, and again, disruptive.
A lot of it has to do with the hazardous materials abatement, too. No matter what we do before any contractor gets in there, it has to have a clean bill of health for what they're working in. So, you know, you think of school getting out in the summer, and then you've got, you know, at least three to four-week period of just going in there for the abatement contractor to come in and get it prepared for the contractor, now you just date half of your summer session. So the amount of work that you can get accomplished is very small, and then you have to protract that out over many, many, many summers, and then you factor in that escalation cost and everything else, it gets pretty costly.
Now, a lot of the renovation projections, and what's been shared, is that because we can't, we can't, we need longer periods of time in the summer, this is where these mobile units or trailers or displacements have to happen, you have to have other locations where you can put the students during that period. And those, again, have to be purchased. They're not worth zero in the end, but they're certainly not worth the same value, and we've definitely heard anecdotally from others that have gone through that, it's extremely, you know, expensive.
Do you have the bottom as opposed to lease rent?
Yeah, they're just, they're just the cost, the benefit, I mean, from what we, and again, I don't, we haven't run the numbers, but just hearing from them, many of them just don't get rid of them, because they, it's not cost-effective, so they kind of live with them.
Short-term leases make financial sense, but if you're looking at a construction duration of a three-year period, your lease cost just goes through the roof, and it's more economical to purchase them outright and then sell them after the project.
Sure. Just have a question for the board, apologize a little bit earlier this summer on this larger questions, but I take it that this building, relative to others in the state of Vermont, as far as age and condition and maintenance, is average relative to other schools, or well-maintained? Is it? What I'm getting at is I'm trying to get the sense of like, and I haven't seen anything in the news, I'm a news junkie, I haven't seen anything where the state of Vermont's about to shut down any schools in Vermont, violating various standards. So I hear things about build to code, the same thing what happens when somebody comes in. There is no code enforcement, except for commercial buildings in South Burlington. I don't know if you guys knew that, but, you know, so a contractor does things on home, and they know what's code for the industry, but there's no legal requirement, because there's no code inspector who checks to see if your wiring is done in a private residential home in South Burlington. So I'm trying to get, like, again, it gets back to the larger issue, what has to be done, versus all the stuff we'd love to have, if money was not an option.
So, just, so there was testimony regarding trying to get the moratorium lifted on state assistance for funding schools, construction. And if I'm recalling right, and maybe Lee or Roberto or even David knows the exact number, but it was well over $2 billion of deferred maintenance, some of the testimony. So schools are in bad shape throughout the state. How ours compares, it's probably comparable to a lot of other districts, from what I understand, I don't know if that's-
Yeah, I think specific to your question, I mean, a lot of school buildings all over the place, I think this district does a really good job of maintaining the buildings, but you get to a point, you can maintain a building really well, but eventually the major systems just outlive their lives. And that becomes, you know, much more of a capital cost than something that can be done, fixing a roof over a winter. And that's where we are. I think the maintenance has been done well, but you're at a point where you've got 15, 60-year-old buildings, and they're in need of, you know, significant upgrades for all of the big infrastructure systems. And that's happening across Vermont. There was a huge building boom, right, late 50s, 60s, all of them are around that vintage. Some of them, taking care of them better than others, but that's where you're seeing, you know, those big B with billion dollars of just deferred maintenance, not taken care of, anything else.
And just to follow up, you know, there, the entire Phase 1 study, where we looked at, we brought in a team of architects and engineers, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, civil, and architectural, and evaluated both buildings, you know, on the roof, inside, throughout both buildings, and documented with photographs, and narratively the conditions and the issues that were found. And that's all online on the school district website, if you're interested, you can see in detail.
To the code question, well, it's a little bit different on the private side, this is a public building, and it's required by law that it's gonna have to be stamped by a design professional, and we're required by law that whatever we're designing has to meet all of the current codes. So there's really no way around that in a public project, where you're gonna have public use?
No, I understand, and my point is, is there, is there an order from the state of Vermont Department of Education saying, you, South Burlington must do ABC to the school? That's my question.
No.
Okay, thanks.
Not just to us, but as far as we know, I don't think there's, they're saying that to any school at the moment.
Right, it's not like sometimes back, back in the day, with the asbestos abatement orders were flying, picking them all over the country.
I do think it's, I mean, I think it's started to come in the form of, like, lead testing is now mandated with some funding, and there is an expectation that there'll be remediation at the local level. But there's been a number of those that have started to eat around the fringes.
And I think it's our responsibility, though, as a board, to make sure that we have facilities that are functional, and any of these major systems, if they go down, it's sort of a catastrophic situation, where we're putting up temporary trailers really fast to put kids in them, and that's not a situation that we, as a board, I think, can let happen. So that's why I feel like doing absolutely nothing is not an option. And once you start to talk about the types of infrastructure changes that need to happen to keep out ahead of these things, for example, HVAC with a pneumatic system that one guy in Vermont knows how to repair, you know, those kinds of things need to be addressed before they become a problem, before we're sort of forced to do it by anyone, or before conditions force us to do it in an emergency way. And once we start to open up the walls, open up the ceilings, all those things, we trigger other codes and other things that wouldn't be triggered without us touching the building, they're okay for now, but once we start that kind of major work, it triggers other things. And I personally come at this from the perspective that I would, I would hate to see the community invest tens of millions of dollars, because that's what it's gonna cost just to do the infrastructure systems, and then put all the walls and floors and ceilings back exactly the way they are, and have the kids have no benefit from the disruption, and have the community see no real benefit in the day-to-day operations of how we're delivering education in the district. And, and that's where I come at this, from a perspective of more than just infrastructure, is what is the responsible thing to do if we're gonna go ahead at this stage and say it's time to address the infrastructure, which I believe it is that time to do that.
So are we, is the HVAC system in imminent danger of failing tomorrow?
Yes.
Gary is the director of operations. Gary is the director of operations, he says yes.
It fails, portions of it fail weekly. We maintain, we replace actuators, valves, check valves on a weekly basis.
Okay, but is the system in imminent danger of failing so that you have no heat in the building?
Permanently, no.
No.
Temporarily?
Is the system at risk of failing to the point of you would not let students in the building?
It's at the end of its useful life.
It's at the end of its useful life.
Is the system at imminent risk of failing to the point that you would not let students in the building?
Well, that's not my decision, but I would say no, that it's, it's not.
I wouldn't think so. So Bridget's point leads me to believe that we are in imminent danger of a catastrophic failure in the system and I have a hard time believing that's the case. Okay? Now, there's this figure of $55 million. Why don't we clarify exactly what $55 million is bought?
I think that's all available.
That's posted on the website by...
So let's just have a discussion, what is $55 million bought?
It updates the systems and the infrastructure within the building that are noted by the engineers that inspected, the structural, electrical, mechanical. Again, if you go over to the high school, for instance, and you look at, you know, their electrical panel, it's, it's the size of a room, right? 4,000 amps. I mean, so maintaining that, just those parts alone, you can't get them. And so there, you know, there's some imminent issues there. When the power goes off, we have a, you know, a switch gear we have to do. You've got to pump an oil switch to turn, to bring the power back on because it's 4,000 amps, right? So it's not, and that, those things are, you can't find them. So there are some things that are imminent, like we're kind of do this. We hope the power's going to come back on to the building.
So is there any reason this hasn't been brought to the community for...
Well, we've done, we've done a lot, Jerry, with those types of things. We've done the best that we can, but when you look at like HVAC, the size of the ductwork, the recumbent air, the return air, all of the standards are very different now. The office that you work in or you teach, taught in at the university is, was probably far upgraded or the new facilities is far upgraded around air exchanges. Similarly in schools, we're in some of the same places. And so trying to regulate temperature, as Bridget said, with the pneumatic air system that's running our thermostats, it's just really, really difficult to do so. And when they start to assess our air quality, that's also part of some of the challenges is we've got to pull in an exorbitant amount of outside air, right? Which isn't very efficient when it's 20, 30 below zero. We've got to reheat the air in an inefficient system to a temperature that then pushes it down into students. And you can see that temperature elevation that significantly begins to disrupt education. It's like coats are on, coats are off, right? And so those are kind of the conditions that we live in. We can say that that's, you know, that's pretty disruptive and concerning to the operations of the system.
Kids are really putting and taking off their coats, left?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how long, how long would it take, how long would it take to fix that problem? How many years?
Well, we asked for an assessment in phase one for the appropriate engineering resources to go into our buildings and assess all of our infrastructure. That is what came back to the board and to the community as that $55 million estimate. So we're, that was looked at in great detail to inform whether or not we even move to phase two of this process. And I was persuaded with that pretty thorough assessment that, you know, regardless of imminence, and I look at that as just saying, I'm hearing from the experts and the people who live in the buildings every day that there are operational issues. And we hired engineers to go through that process to say, this is the list of dated systems and where you, where you need to focus your investments with a stewardship plan, whether it's all together or spread out over time, that your facilities are at risk for. So, you know, I look at that and say, that's our baseline and that is the premise off of which we invested in phase two. And what brings me to the point of saying, we're on that cusp of, do we keep investing in 50-plus-year-old buildings and infrastructure and what do we get out of that operationally? And then is the trade-off worth looking at a build option where we might also enhance the educational process, the system that we deliver to? And we're there. I know I feel strongly enough to want to create that dialogue within the community and it requires that we get it to the next level. Again, I don't want anything to fail at this point and that's kind of the nature of the beast is, we don't know when it's going to fail.
How long would it take for the renovations to be done? Is it multi-year? How long?
Multi-year.
Do you have specifics on that or, I mean, it's embedded in that, four years and...
There's, there's going to be construction with new construction, so I'd like to get an idea, you know, between the two.
Well, we have a renovation option in here, I believe.
But the renovation option for the $55 million is on the website, I believe it was three years, was that right? Lee?
It's done as a project.
It was three phases at the middle school, partly because you have no swing space. So you have to break it into chunks that you can do, limiting the amount of trailers and other things you have. So we do, you know, one-third of the building in year one and move students into trailers for that and then move them into that new space and then phase two in the next year and phase three in the third year. So my recollection is that it was three years to do that.
Yeah. And if you look at, on the website, phase two of our study, you'll see on there, we put together eight options and actually the majority of those eight included variations, different variations of renovations and renovations and additions. And included in, in the presentation, there's very detailed phasing that would happen with each of those options and that's all on there in terms of duration and everything.
Any board discussion on the specific concepts? I'll speak for myself, but one of the, I mean, I certainly have considered the notion of renovation at the middle school. I mean, I went through the tour and got to talk to staff and there's, there's a fair amount of satisfaction with the individual classroom space, but it is, it is hard for me to justify, when you look at the next 50 years, for the lion's share of our student population not considering a build option, kind of out of the gate as a combined package. The other things I looked at with these concepts are, I understand the city is interested in this streetscape concept, but based on all the dialogue we have had over the past, gosh, five years specifically, but even before that around security, I really do consider that, I think it's referred to as line of sight, but basically keeping staff and students kind of as far away from thoroughways and creating natural barriers to access the buildings by folks where you don't have some, I'm talking to you, Lee, but you're the one who shared some of the information too. But we've had these conversations with security experts at the state level as well. So some of the concepts that are close, that put school buildings closer to the street are less attractive concepts to me. And then also probably the other variable I look at is really the disruption time. And that, from my own standpoint, is, you know, pushing me closer to concept five in terms of getting that more accurate cost estimate. But I don't know how my colleagues feel. Martin?
Yeah, you articulated some of the exact thinking that I've been having on this as well, but I did have a question as well, as far as when we get to this next phase, and I'll use the wellness center as for my example, I mean, how much flexibility is there when we go through this additional community outreach and such? If we're just seeing a lot of pushback on a concept like that, which seems to be a concept that I've been hearing pushback on already and, and individuals as they get educated to what the benefits of the wellness center is that, or are, that they still are really pushing back on that, how much flexibility is there at the end of the day to say, all right, well, we're going to scale back that or we're not going to have the black box theater or we're going to, you know, those different things? I mean, what does that look like over the next few months? You know, at the end, you know, when we get to November 22nd to send to the pricer, you know?
So if you, just play that out, if you made a decision today and said, as an example, move forward with concept five and we're developing that including the wellness center, what we're trying to do there is come up with all of those kind of risk factors and take them out so we can come up with a cost. And at that point, when we have a wellness center and two billion, we have pretty good information come December about square footages cost, about costs related to site conditions and how we're going to have to adapt buildings to, you know, work on the site. If you, you know, sometime in November said, yeah, that's just not working, we need to, you know, get rid of the wellness and go back to just the PE space in the high school, at that point, we're going to have plans and, you know, concepts of what it looks like with the wellness center on there. So we would have time to necessarily change all of that around by March, but we would have the ability to say, if you want to take that program element out, we have pretty good relative cost information right now to be able to give you what the number needs to be to vote on. And then you'd have to incorporate that scope of work, reducing, you know, the wellness center out after the vote.
So, so can the, the plan going ahead, if, because I'm also leaning towards, with some trepidation towards option five, can that be scoped so that there are really three components that, come November, after this additional community output or outreach, thank you, that we have some flexibility? Like, in other words, have the high school component, the middle school, middle school component and the wellness center in a manner that if by November 22nd, we say, yeah, this wellness center's not going to work or even the middle school's not going to work, we're all not going to work, I guess, let's not say that. Because I look at, I think by far our strongest, I don't want to see argument, I mean, the strongest position is definitely the high school from, from my tour, from looking at all the materials and such. I think we have a very strong case to make for the high school. I think we have a strong case for the middle school, but it's not as strong. I think our weakest case to be made is for the wellness center. So I would like some flexibility and maybe even beyond, flexibility beyond March. Let's go to March and we have the whole package there. If, if it's refused, and this might go to partly Jerry's concern of what does the board do if, if there's a refusal on, on the overall package? If we're able to at some point go back out with a reduced package, but not have to do all the work again, you know, have that, all right, people have rejected this, but we think the reason why they rejected this is the wellness center. We're going to go out and ask for a bond for the high school and middle school, but not have to do all that work again to get that geared up. Does that, does that make sense? Trying to just understand that.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that we've definitely, as a working group, and I think some of the board members are aware, is that the wellness facility isn't just a dreamed-up standalone only. It's programmatically connected to the high school. So if you take off or take out the wellness facility, then you've got to re-include spaces back into the, to the footprint of the high school and in some cases the middle school. So again, that was...
So there would be more work?
Yeah, so you'd have to push those back into the, to the space. I'm not saying that's not doable, but again, I think in the conversation, the way things have gone along has been, you know, to take out the spaces in the high school and push those into the wellness facility and in some, to some extent, some of that from the middle school, to really allow that to be a big part of the high school programming.
Yeah, if you look at the net square footage, I mean, I had a similar concern and I think some of it is a reaction to sort of how it got named to have a discussion around concepts, honestly, but it, the net square footage isn't that substantial over the gym space that was allocated to the middle and the high school when we talked about separate facilities. I can't remember what the net was. It might be 10,000 or 15,000 incremental?
Square feet net.
It was, but that, some came off of the high school footprint too.
It's the net, so the wellness center is 84,500 square feet. So the net is 40,000.
Basically half, yes. Yeah, so 50% of it would have to be added back in terms of square footage.
Another way to look at it, real rough numbers, right? We've identified the wellness center as about $17 million and we're saying, well, half of that program you have to build anyways, whether it's in the wellness box or in the high school box, that's kind of gives you a ballpark of what you're talking about magnitude-wise.
Well, and, you know, again, I don't want to look at any incremental, even a million dollars as inconsequential.
That's right.
Because I, I think as stewards for the community, we can't. It, you know, it does bother me that the concept that I think addresses many of the concerns I've had does eliminate the existing track. But I also think it creates the potential for a really nice inviting green space coming in too, that provides additional security. Yeah.
Just following up, you had a question about whether it'd be easy to switch paths on the middle school. And that's a tougher question. So if you're deciding, let's say for example, to move forward with concept five, you know, we are going to be sitting with middle school user groups, middle school parents, middle school, you know, teachers and community members talking about their vision for a, you know, a new middle school. And if at some point later it's decided, oh, let's, let's not do that, let's go back and do something in the existing middle school. And that is a, that's a total, you know, reconfiguration and reboot of, you know, of that concept, you know, it's something different.
It changes the site plan and changes everything.
Yeah, it changes very much. It changes a lot of things as opposed to, let's say, the wellness center where, you know, all of that is, it's a, it's a box, you know, and whether it becomes a smaller box that's added to the high school.
So in short, wellness center, yes, it's a little bit easier for us to handle, you know, later decision in the project one or another. The middle school's a pretty fundamental decision.
Let's just space in the, in the wellness center, I'm just trying to imagine it, it's 84,000 square feet that's there. I think it would 2,000 square foot house, so it would be equivalent to 42,000 square foot houses. What's most of the space in that wellness center going to be? Is it just going to be a big track with a lot of space? Give me an idea of what's filling in.
So, let's see if I can show you. So wellness center, right, so here's the indoor 200-meter track, right? So you think of the track, square footage itself, and to build that, right, you end up, you have to buy the donut hole in the middle?
Right.
So we're saying, well, that's just not efficient if we just had to do that and we still were left with high schools and movement studios and everything else in the high school. So we said, let's be efficient. Let's try and fill as much of that space that we have to buy inherently anyways with this and fill it. So what we're doing is inside the track, three basketball courts. So three of the four courts that are programmed that we need for the middle school and high school, three of them go right there and the fourth's there. So we, you know, we were going to buy that square footage anyways, now we're just buying it as part of the box. What we're putting in all around the edges, right, those are, you know, the locker rooms, the bathrooms, you know, the movement studio, the weight room, all of that stuff. So we're trying to pack as much program in there to make it as efficient and cost-effective as possible versus you just build the box with the track and you still have all those other components in the middle school and the high school. Does that help?
Yeah, so it's much like the current UVM facility, with basketball courts in the interior and a track on the outside.
Correct.
And there can be discussions and there's, there are discussions still about exactly whether it would be three basketball courts all the time or whether it would be three basketball courts part of the time with turf laid down over it another part of the year. You know, there are, those details are things that would be worked out as we went through the design process.
I think just, you know, collectively, a lot of talk about the wellness center, everyone's toity-toity, you know, elaborate situation. I think another thing we need to bring to the table is what, you know, Russell Burke said last time about the all need for all school assemblies and the fact that now it takes down our gym in the high school, two days, there's no programming for two days for every all-school assembly. It's not only happens three times a year. I would tell you, today's kids, today's demographic wants that all years, all assembly, all kids. Everyone wants to hear everything at the same time. They want transparency. They want that. And I think if we're not giving that to them, we're limiting ourselves in their development as well as the, you know, the pod areas for the steam work, all of that. Like, I work closely with kids that come out of UVM in my profession and they're all looking for that collaborative experience and you're getting that and that transparency through those all-school assemblies that can't happen today because there's just logistically it can't happen. So I think we need to sell it as more of, you know, not just the wellness component or the sports component. We need to speak to everyone and what the real need is there, you know, for the facilities of the high school, I think. You know, I think that just needs to be our selling point with the remaining. Because I just, everything I'm hearing is just everyone is elaborating this, you know, this expensive gym for the kids to work out in and that's just really not what it is, you know, or not the full collective reasoning for it. So I think that before we go to the community focus groups, we really need to sit down and figure out all the uses of that. So I think that's a great addition to our community. graduation can be held there, things like that, that we can't personally do on our own space, we don't have space for that, that means a lot to the community, means a lot for kids to graduate at their school, if they attended, you know, I think that to me, space, it's a space as well.
The other piece that wasn't raised tonight, that came up last week, was the fact that that track will be one-of-a-kind in the state that you can charge to have, I don't know the terminology used, but-
Yeah, there would be rental income, to a certain extent, from the track, again, we don't want to oversell, you know, how much that would be, but it would support staff to kind of operate it and, and all of that, but it would be the only indoor track that's really available for high school students, because UVM has kind of said that theirs will not be available anymore, Middlebury has an indoor track, but doesn't rent it, and doesn't let high schoolers on it, Norwich has one, but rental costs are very, very high, basically, they sort of price people out of using it, so it would be really the indoor track for high school indoor track meets and that kind of thing during the indoor track season, but yeah, Martin, you have, I'm sorry, I mean, did you have anything else on that, or?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just trying to evaluate what our role is in all this as well, and, and, you know, I hear talking about selling this concept, and that, that doesn't feel quite right to me, what, what I feel, that I'm trying to figure out, and what I think we need to do a very good job in, in educating the community, is, this is what we have right now, and here are all these huge problems leading to this fifty-five million dollars, in fact, I think people who might be watching this tonight are missing a big part of this, which is, we have these serious problems, which we talked a little bit about tonight, and we do need to deal with the infrastructure, but then we have all these potential educational benefits, and not just educational benefits, we have other benefits such as accessibility, which, you know, that's obviously educational as well, but, but there are many benefits to having the new schools, and, and I would say, one of the benefits that I didn't know about is, actually, it's going to be much better for our carbon footprint over a number of years, that, that's, you know, there's an investment of carbon upfront, but, but it pays off, but I think we, we really need to just, I, I'm trying to decide that what is the best for the education in, in South Burlington, you know, what are the benefits of one of the options, what do we have to do to take care of things, and get that out and educate the community, and see where they come out in, in, in March, and I think that's one thing that I think we definitely need to bolster, is particularly the benefits, you know, we've been hearing them bits and pieces, but I think we need a full analysis, a full understanding of how the option that we're going to go with and proceed with will help meet our district ends, I mean, it's been talked about a little bit, but not as deeply as I think we're going to need to do, so that the community's fully informed when they vote on this eventually, so.
Yeah, and I think a big component of that, Martin, particularly at the high school, is, is the eyes-on, how the high school's functioning right now on a day-to-day basis, and what different kids' experiences are in the high school, that was eye-opening to me, to go through that tour, both, you know, with the eyes of a potentially a student with a disability, to a student who was trying to take, you know, art and math classes, to, you know, to staff supervising students, when there was very, you know, limited visual, and, and that, that becoming a bigger part of the role than maybe it needs to be, if there was more open space and more passive supervision. Alright, so do we need a motion?
I, I had, I was just waiting for everyone, because everyone's, everyone, everyone has not been around it as long, and I wanted to hear from everyone, Alex, you were a little quiet, did you have anything you wanted to, to add?
Sure, you want, you want to go ahead, and then I'll-
No, go for it.
Okay, sure, I, you know, I've obviously given this a lot of thought, and I think, at a prior board meeting, I referred to the high school building as Frankenstein, and, you know, with lots of parts put here, the entrance to the high school used to be where the library is now, and actually, I think maybe a better description of it would be Mr. Potato Head, where you put, you know, various parts in, in different holes, and you try to say, oh, that's a, that's a good-looking person right there, so, you know, just to sum it up like that, I think the high school, it, it, you know, it's a problem, and, just in general, of the, the concepts that we've been looking at, you know, I'd say, you know, if it were me, and, and I've gone through these things with, you know, my house, my car, try to get it as long as I can, and it, and it's a situation we're in, where it seems as though we can get quite a bit more by taking a further step, and, you know, when, when, you know, you start out by thinking, okay, well, let's renovate it for fifty-five million dollars, and maybe somebody can chime in on how much of that money goes towards renting trailers, I, I don't know, I haven't seen the details of that, but it, 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 we don't get much for fifty-five million dollars, so if we go new, we get a lot more, and then the Wellness Center entered the discussion a little late, and, and it turns out, actually, yeah, there's a pretty good need, or, or the Wellness Center would be very useful, and, you know, there've been a few examples out here, so I don't want to reiterate it, but I guess my thought process has come to thinking that what I want to recommend to the voters is Concept Five, and I, I, you know, I thought, I've also thought to myself, well, if I were Vladimir Putin, and I were to make this decision myself, I, I would not be, feel comfortable doing it, but I feel good about letting the voters make the decision on it, not, not me, as a, as a dictator or something like that, I mean, I think it's good that we're doing it democratically, of course, and I think, you know, as, as my role as a decision-maker is to find what is the best concept, and what is the best plan for the voters to make that decision on, and I, I think I'm landing at Concept Five, which you have up on the screen right now, so thanks for making sure I got the chance to chime in.
And if I can add another comment, this is a, this is a conversation that has to go to the community at some point in time, if it's not now, it may be two years from now, it may be five years from now, I'm, you know, I think we're all doing our best to do our due diligence on this, this, this is a project that is going to require a lot of community feedback, I do think the time for the conversation is now, and the work's been done, and I'm, you know, I'm excited about moving forward with it, and, and really getting everybody's feedback, Bob?
Say this does pass, what about the other three schools, they've got old boards, old rules, are we in a position to be able to, if we float this bond of two-hundred-and-nine million, are we going to be able to take care of those other instances if we have catastrophic failures, or are you going to have to come back to the voters again?
So I don't, I, I think it's appropriate that we recognize through our stewardship plan that we have active plans in place for all the other three, Bob?
Okay.
And you, actually, probably more than most committee members know that plan, or a little bit of that plan, we're fortunate that in nineteen ninety-five, we went through a renovation at the elementary schools, so, albeit, that's a bit of time ago, but it's far less than nineteen sixty, when they, when some of these buildings were built, so they're in much better condition, and a lot of them were brought up to a newer code, so they're in a different place than these two schools, that said, on an ongoing basis, you know, South Burlington, school district is going to need to continue to look at demographics, opportunities for our students in the long term, and, you know, I alluded to earlier in the, in the board agenda, a little bit about kind of the one-eighty Market Street, you know, could be a great opportunity for our students long-term, it could be, it could, it can, it could continue to be maybe a little too disruptive in the long term, when, when the build-out of Market Street happens, similarly, you know, with the activity in and around the airport, we don't know, again, we're taking all, I think, the necessary precautions to make sure that they're, they're good environments for our kids to learn.
Second question, where's the financing, if this bond does pass, is that going to be local financing, is it going to be out-of-state, is it a combination, any idea what the interest rate's going to be?
So it's a combination, and I'll let Gary, you know, do as much as he can, but it's pretty, pretty unknown at this point, but we have some concepts around how we would have to do it.
Yes, so it's a lo, a long process to, to issue bonds as a, as a school district, we have a request for proposal for a financial advisor to come and help us prepare that, but it, there could be several funding sources, the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank has expressed interest in, in funding part of it, or at least having the conversations about funding part of it, and then the district will go through a process to determine a credit rating to be able to issue municipal bonds for the fund.
We do know the Bond Bank, based on what it does annually, would not be in a position to fund the whole project.
They could not.
Yeah. Jerry?
So, I'm just going to say, I am distressed to find out of the mechanical and electrical state of the building, so I did not know they were this, in this poor shape, okay? So let me be clear about that, but I want to push back, since there needs to be a voice at this meeting, which is going to push back a little on where the board is obviously going, about a year ago, Martin and I participated in an event, in the School of Debate Club event, in which students from different communities in the state of Vermont came, and some of us volunteered to be moderators, if you will, and I just want to say, it worked just fine, you know, in a classroom, if you get kids who are excited about learning, participating, and you get educators or facilitators who are glad to be there, education works, okay, let, let's not forget that, I understand this is a beautiful new building, I am a very physically active person, you know, the idea of a Wellness Center is just very exciting, but, it's a large sum of money, there's a reappraisal coming up, the state of Vermont is not extraordinarily wealthy, thirty-five percent of the state of Vermont's budget comes from our friend in Washington known as Uncle Sam, Uncle Sam is now twenty-two point three trillion dollars in absolute debt, forget about unfunded debt, that's over a hundred trillion dollars, at some point, the government could easily say to states like Vermont, listen, we, we've been funneling a lot of money to you for a long time, and we're going to have to cut back a little, because people don't want to lend us any money anymore, because we're so much in debt, you have a whole series of forces, which are just banging at the door, and as much as I'm nervous about the condition of your boilers, your electrical system, and everything else, and people putting on coats and taking them off, I am nervous about people banging on the door with all these other forces, so, my summary of this event is, you're giving the community two very painful choices, stick with the old, it's going to be a lot of heartache, or spend a whole lot of money on the new, and I'll be, I'll tell you, it feels like damned if you do, damned if you don't, that's, that's my assessment at this point, but I am distressed to learn of the condition of the building, David, and I think that has to be addressed, I don't want kids to be putting on a coat and taking it off in the middle of class.
Thanks.
Bridgette?
Sure. I believe we should authorize Doran Whittier to move forward with Concept Five, as I said before, and I won't go into details on this, but I, I think doing nothing is not an option, and the types of renovations that are needed to address the, the infrastructure issues are significant, and expensive, and I would really hate to see the community spend a lot of money just to walk back into the building and sort of see some new finishes, but not really see any difference in how we're able to deliver education, I think the case at the high school, the challenges we're facing there are, that we're overcrowded, which manifests, the challenge manifests itself in many ways, scheduling challenges, behavioral challenges, all kinds of challenges that we're facing at the high school with regard to the overcrowdedness, and that is expected to grow over the next ten years, we have ADA compliance issues that really do need to be addressed, so that everyone can access their education appropriately, we have a real lack of passive supervision, which sort of contributes to some of these behavioral challenges, and we have nowhere for students really, as a group, to congregate with passive supervision, and when I say passive supervision, we've talked a little bit about it, but it basically means adults can kind of keep an eye on the situation, but they don't have to be in the middle of the situation, kids can be given some independence, while knowing that someone is there to kind of oversee what's going on, and I think that really hurts our ability to build community, and I think for kids to be engaged and to want to come to school, they need to feel like they're a part of a community, and I think this is one of the last chances for kids to be with such a cross-section of the community, in, in all kinds of different ways, and I think that's a life lesson to take forward with them, if they can be part of a community that is so diverse, and really feel like they're a part of something, they'll take that into the rest of their life with them. I think the high school also lacks extended learning areas for collaboration and demonstrations of learning, and I think that's more and more important, as we move to an educational model that continues to evolve toward project-based learning, and more independent learning, and more collaborative learning, where the kids are working together to solve problems, and those are the types of jobs that are out there now, those types of jobs that require collaboration and problem-solving, and really focusing in on a project, and we need spaces that support that, we need adjacencies that support that, so that the right departments are near one another, our performing and visual arts spaces are undersized for the size school that we have, and they are really hard to access for students with physical disabilities, especially, you know, some of our practice spaces are a real challenge for students with any kind of physical disability, a lack of gym and other indoor athletic space means that students are practicing in the hallways for indoor track, which is incredibly unsafe, as well as for other sports, and it means that a lot of students are practicing very late into the night, just because of scheduling issues, because we have one gym at the high school, you know, practices are kind of stacked on top of each other, and it's really eating into kids' ability to get home, and get settled for the night, and, and, and focus in on homework, I think that renovation would also give us the opportunity to bring back and house some aspects of technical education, we've talked about this in some of the presentations earlier on, but this is an aspect that has, was brought up during the principals' workshops, which is that, you know, we do have these regional technical centers, but kids are sort of given a choice, after they've sort of embedded themselves in this community freshman year, they're kind of given a choice, do you go off-campus to go do that work, or do you stay on-campus and forego some of those opportunities that might really fit what your vision is for, you know, your career path, so that you can stay on-campus with the friends that you have here, and, and the community that you have here, and to be able to embed, not all of that, but some of that, back into South Burlington High School, I think would be a huge advantage for the high school, and finally, in terms of, you know, why don't we just renovate the building to bring all these benefits that a new building would be, based on what we've learned through a lot of research over the last couple of years, it's very hard to renovate the high school without significant expense, and, so, the high school, I think the case is pretty clear for a new high school, the middle school, you know, I hear a lot about how the case is less clear for the middle school, and I, I disagree, I really disagree, that, I believe that right now, while we have enough space for the size student population that we have, it is not used optimally, and we have teams that are divided up around the building, and it seems like a small issue, until you sort of understand what that means for collaboration amongst the teachers, and amongst the students on those teams, they have to really be intentional about meeting and collaborating, whereas if we had the spaces that sort of support the team teaching model that we have now at the middle school, it means that teachers and students get to collaborate every time classes change, you know, they're all sort of in their own little pod, and teachers can really check in with each other about a particular student, or about a project that everyone's working on that's integrating the different, the different disciplines on that team, I think, as I said with the high school, we're really lacking collaboration space here, students are trying to work in the hallways as best they can, getting kicked out of the library for being too noisy, and they're trying to collaborate, those kinds of things, and more and more, our teaching model is going toward demonstrations of proficiency and demonstrations of learning, and we need the appropriate spaces for students to be able to do that, again, the lack of passive supervision, similar issues in the middle school that we have in the high school, and as has been noted many times, the lack of natural light in this building is a real challenge for students and for staff, and I really think middle school is just such a critical time for engagement of students, you know, if you can really make school a place that they want to be every day, at the middle school level, which is challenging in so many ways, I think that carries over into their high school experience and beyond, and I think, I think it's really important for the middle schoolers to have a space that supports their learning and, and their development level, on the Wellness Center, I really see that the Wellness Center supports all of our ends, personal development, citizenship, lifelong learning, and academic proficiency, and I won't go into details on all of these, but, you know, some examples are, you know, personal development, Mr. Burke has talked in some of our other meetings about a Wellness Center like this really allowing us to change- center like this really allowing us to change the way we're doing physical education at the high school, and to get those students to a place faster where they are engaging with physical activity as a part of what they do in life, and more as an adult model as opposed to, oh, it's just PE class, I have to go to it, I have to get this credit knocked out. Instead, it's here are all these different options, and here's some flexibility, and here are facilitators to help you determine, you know, what is gonna best meet your needs. And to have that space available all day long, when they're not in class, or, you know, in the evenings after school, I think would really, would really support wellness, which in turn supports academic proficiency. For a lot of kids without enough physical activity, it's hard to focus, it's hard to do the things you need to do academically. In terms of citizenship, you know, one small example is that I know high schoolers right now work with the rec department to help deliver the summer outdoor track program for the younger kids in the community, and to have a similar program indoors to replace, you know, right now, a lot of our elementary school kids are running around the gyms in the winter in, you know, these little mini programs. To have a space for them to go and actually, you know, have a running club, you know, have some kind of additional physical activity in these long winter months, I think would be really helpful K through 12 in the district. I won't go into all the details about indoor track because Mr. Burke has been so eloquent about it in other meetings, but it is our biggest winter sport with a hundred and sixty participants, and it's a very low barrier to entry sport. So, families don't have to spend a lot of money on equipment, there are no cuts in indoor track, so even students who are nervous about trying out for a team or who don't have the athletic background to do that can participate in indoor track, and I think having a facility that really allows them to do that safely would be a very big benefit. And I think for other sports, obviously conditioning on the track or practice on the infield in the shoulder seasons before they can get outdoors or after outdoors has gotten too cold for them to practice. And then I think the wellness center really facilitates community use of the athletic facilities better than any of the other options, because being a separate building with a separate entrance, I think it's just easier to sort of maintain a little bit more space from our actual programming while still allowing the community to, to use the, the wellness center, for example, from six-thirty to eight-thirty in the morning before the kids are there, or even in the evenings, you know, after the kids are done practicing, or even during some practices if it's not conflicting with the use that we have for the curriculum. And then we've talked about rental opportunities and the support for sort of track as a statewide sport indoors. So, as we've really, and then overall, I think option five, as Elizabeth alluded to, to sort of summarize to, is I, I think safety and security is something that we haven't talked as much about in this phase as we did in some of the other phases, but I do think that option five really gives us sort of the best safety and security options out of the five concepts that we're looking at tonight. So, that is sort of my summary of why I would support Concept Five as the next phase for us to move into, so I, I don't know if you need a specific motion.
I know we've gone over our agenda time here, but Cole, our senior student representative to the board, did take the time because he couldn't be here tonight to write a statement, so I'm just gonna read that into the meeting here for those folks who are here and for the tape. So, this is from Colt Patno. "I believe I voiced my opinion on master planning and visioning, but I felt like I should write something up to share for tonight. I want to go to college to be a high school teacher, and with the high school as it is right now, I'm not sure that I would want to come back. There's no air conditioning in roughly half the building, and if there is, it sometimes continues to blast all winter long. Classrooms are small, and there sometimes aren't enough desks for all the students in a class. I do think that the middle school is in better shape than the high school, but it also has many problems of its own. As many of you know, I've been very vocal about my concern over tearing down a building that has just been built, meaning the restroom's adjacent to the track. After seeing that for a million dollars more and two years less, we could have three new buildings and a new track, I had a change of heart. My current preference of the five options would be option five. I really enjoy the functionality of a shared air conditioning, heating, and kitchen that comes with option five since it's mean, it means we wouldn't have to pay for two of the same things. As a student who is in the schools until roughly 6:00 PM almost every night, I see how the indoor wellness facility can be an asset to our school, namely getting track students a place to train that doesn't involve them running through the halls. With that being said, I have serious doubts about the community's appetite for the indoor wellness center. Perhaps if we work with the city to attempt to not build two of the same things, they will be more open to the idea. What the community might want is an option of a new high school and middle school in the location of option five without the wellness center. Anyone that walks into either of the buildings can see that they have problems, and if they don't, ask them to try to find the art rooms in the high school without a map. What the community might not fully see is how we need an indoor wellness facility. This might have been confusing, and if it was, I'm happy to attempt to explain myself more in person. All I know is that something needs to be done soon to these buildings, for they really need it. While I don't even know if this statement is being shared, I hope that it helps."
Well done.
Well, shared, Cole, thank you. So, do we have a specific motion?
I would move that we authorize Doran Whittier to move into the next phase of design work and community engagement around Concept Five with a view toward a March 2020 bond vote.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thanks, everybody.
Can I have a comment as far as how to present? Some feedback on presenting it to the community, that instead of painting it as these ideals of how we would like it to be, I think the student whose letter you just read really makes a very good case on why these things are needed, and if the community could hear more about, from that perspective and not, Bridget, I love your ideas, I fully support you, but I think people are just trying to make ends meet, and if they can hear more from the students on why this really is needed as opposed to these beautiful ideals of how it would be nice to be, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think you're talking about current conditions and, you know, what's sort of leading us to, you know, this direction, and thank you for that feedback, we really appreciate it.
Thanks. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Nine, considering a line of credit for master planning and visioning Phase Three.
Come on, Gary. So, Gary's gonna walk through this a little bit for you and answer any questions that you have. I know this has come up before, it's also been in your packet, but because we didn't budget for the work, because obviously determining the future of whether this was needed or not is unknown, right? And so, how do we go forward in, in doing this? We don't have it budgeted, our capital reserve fund is not suited appropriately to do this level of service and pay for the services, so a line of credit. Gary?
So, so David pretty much summed it up. We have coordinated for a $350,000, 2.8% 12-month line of credit for the community The purpose of that is to pay for the design phase, what we're already in right now, and to get us to a bond vote in March. That is $300,000 of the $350,000. The balance of the, the other $50,000 is intended to pay the pre-bond portion of the financial advisor that we had the request for proposal out. It's also would pay for public relations and communications, RFP, that we have out, and potentially, if the board decides to move forward with a construction advisor to verify and validate Doran Whittier's work, that line of credit could be used to, to fund that as well. So, these are all preliminary costs, and under, under Vermont law, they can be reimbursed by the bond issue if we get a positive bond vote in March. These costs can be included in, in the bonding when, when we actually issue the municipal bonds. If we did not get a positive bond vote in March, we would have to include the, at least the debt service for the $350,000 line of credit for whatever portion we have used prior to, to the bond vote, and then we would have to budget in subsequent years to, to pay off the balance of what we funded with the, with the line of credit. So, that's, that's pretty much the, the summary of, of where we are, and that, that line of credit is, is there if you decide to approve it tonight for signature by the board.
So, we, you and I spoke earlier today about what we're getting for it, and you kind of gave a summary of it, get to the bond vote. So, I think we're also getting, we're getting an actual plan, not, not a napkin drawing like we saw on that.
It will be what Doran Whittier described as the rest of the, their work between today and the March vote.
Right, where, so we're getting, we're getting blueprints, a 3D model, and something that we can say, this is what it's gonna look like approximately. A little bit can change, but we're gonna have pretty detailed view of what we're gonna look at, or what we're gonna, what we're gonna be voting on.
Correct. You will get, I am not saying you will get complete construction-ready blueprints, because I don't believe that's the case. You will get a schematic design, a 3D model, and a fully developed cost estimate.
And the other thing is, they're, out of that $300,000, they're paying sort of subconsultants to do things like hazmat testing and soil work, sort of the things that they're doing in order to be able to do that design, they are paying outside folks to be able to do that out of that $300,000.
Take over all, all pre-bond preparation costs.
So, to be clear on this, that the, a, a positive approval of the bond by the voters in March would reimburse these expensive expenses necessary, but, but they are expenses that will be incurred, you're really looking for authorization for a line of credit to fund those kind of pre-the bond vote. And from, from an incurred expense standpoint, I'm assuming, and maybe just ask the clarifying question, that many, a lot of the data that would be generated from these investments is usable beyond even a bond vote, for instance, I mean, whether, or whether the bond's approved or not in March.
Yes, just think of the relevance of the, the money that we spend on hazmat testing and mitigation now, we would have a clear picture of both of these facilities for that. We now will have a complete soil analysis for our site plan, which would be helpful, let's say, in, in meeting the three-acre rule on, on this site going forward. All those things have other benefits, but they are necessary to be able to, for the board to have confidence that, that you know what you need to be bonding for, or asking to bond for.
So, would that also be paid for the municipal financial advisor, is that the funds for that?
Any other board questions? Questions from the public? And you need action, David? So, do we have a motion to, it says consider here, is it, is it looking specifically for approval, Gary?
To approve, to approve the line of credit for master planning and visioning.
So, a motion to approve the line of credit for master planning and visioning Phase Three professional services?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, line of credit is approved. All right, Agenda Item 10, negotiations update. We did receive the fact-finders recommendations over the weekend, so we're looking to schedule a meeting with the SBA, I think mid-September. I don't know, know if you've heard a specific date, but I think we've heard the 24th might be potentially on, well, I'll just share that with you, we've, we heard that a mediator may be available at that timeframe, so hopefully we can all make that date. All right, Agenda Item 11, the school board yearly agenda.
So, I'm not, I'm still not ready, but I'm not gonna keep punning it down the road either because I'm gonna let you know that for October 4th, we'll have financial conditions and activities scheduled, and I'll figure out where I can get treatment of community and treatment of staff in there. One of the things that I'm struggling with, again, just on, I said this last time, is when should they be, where should they be placed on the calendar under policy governor that is most informative to the process for the year ahead? So, should treatment of community and staff be done, you know, in the beginning, at the very start, or even prior to the start of the school year? Or is it better that it's embedded somewhere in the, in the, maybe the last quarter of the year? And that's part of what we've been working on as a central office staff, is to figure out where those things best go to inform our work forward. And so, financial planning and budgeting, probably pretty good there, but based on when we did them last, again, I think these, these work, we did them in, in November, late November, probably okay, but a little bit late, right? So, some of those could either be, be forwarded over here to help inform the, the first quarter, so that's what we're struggling with. I'm meeting, I've got another meeting tomorrow morning, but right now, October 4th for financial conditions and activities will be in that first meeting in October, and I'll come back with, you know, a full rewrite, which I'm close to doing.
Okay. All right, seeing no other questions, we'll move on to Agenda Item 12, the, yeah, the other paper articles, and I think we had a chance to fill some of those out last time. So, we've got a recommendation for something to run in the early October issue that is the recommended middle school, high school renovations versus new build conversation. That's still accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. And then beyond that, we had something around the funding mechanism and educational impact, and then we're into budget and vote. So, we're gonna be looking for some authorship for the two, the three TBAs here.
I would like to, one of these.
Okay, any preference?
Since funding mechanism is coming up soonest, I can certainly take that.
All right. Anybody else want to sign up?
I'm happy to do the educational impact.
Okay. All right, we'll hold off on the budget one then. Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
We're okay there? Unless anybody wants to add anything past that, we're looking at kind of immediately the week of the, of town meeting. All right, we'll hold off on that. All right, setting the agenda for September 18th.
So, I am not at that currently, I'm not at that meeting, so I've got other commitments going on at my university, so I'll have that covered. We have, the calendar needs to go back.
We do, we do have a policy 2.1 on here?
Yeah, so this is, this was, just because it's on our calendar, we've kept it in there, so this will go hand in hand with whatever I come up with for the redo. It may be a first reading, I don't know.
Was the action under number eight, or is that?
Uh, no, I think we kept that as a placeholder.
Yep.
So, but I think we'll keep master planning and visioning on here, just as an update, status update, whatever we want to call it.
Yeah, we, yeah, we definitely need to have a discussion about organization of the whole process with Doran Whittier, and, and what a committee would look like that would be on just the, the core working group, what that might look like, so that might be a discussion that we could have next week.
And will we have feedback from an RFP on the financial?
Comes back.
Okay.
So, I have an, I mean, the other thing I have is to, I have some work going on right now with central office folks around staffing and allocating resources to certain project. So, I'll have, I, I need to do an update where I'm moving some things around and some recommended changes with some added resources there, so obviously because I'm not here on the 18th, I'd rather like to do that, so that may be the first meeting in October, but I don't know, I'm feeling kind of bold about not being here on the 18th, but anyway, I'll, I'll figure that out.
David, can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
I think in the last, at least two of the last four or five years, we've had to deal with overcrowded classrooms in the elementary schools. Would the 18th be a good time to get an enrollment update?
Sure. I usually- I usually, I usually get a little, I usually do it right around this, this, this second meeting in September.
Yeah.
Just, just to give people a little bit of an update. We, again, we're doing okay. We have a few spots that, you know, we expected to be a little bit on the higher side, but I think we're doing fine just in, in general. We got a couple of spots up here in, in the middle school that are a little bit of a concern. We've got some higher numbers in some of those classrooms, so we're working through that. I think our biggest school right now, just as the biggest watch, is Orchard at, pushing the 400, over 400 now, and some of those class sizes, you know, just the, the number in that, in the school. And I do have a historical dataset that you'll see, I just need to verify the data, but you'll be able to see kind of where we are and look back to the past 10 years on where we are.
And my, my other paper article tomorrow really looks at the year-end finish and the enrollment at the start of the school year, and it's up over five and a half percent, I think 125.
Wow.
And how many kindergartens did we end up with, David?
Five class, five classrooms over at Orchard.
I had seen somewhere, some community discussion online saying there were four, and I thought it was five.
And we have, we have an Orchard teacher right here, Alex. Thanks for hanging out. This is Alex, school board. Yeah, five classroom teachers in, one of the, I think that's, we haven't had that ever. So we're 86 in kindergarten, I think Mark told me, 86 students in kindergarten. So when you look at that in just the pure magnitude of this class sizes that we have, right, our graduating classes are in that 240, 250, so 85 is a, you know, is a big chunk. You see that number coming.
So one potential topic to put on this meeting, particularly if David cannot attend, is we have not moved the board's self-assessment conversation forward in a little while. I wonder if we want to revisit that. We, we do have some information and kind of didn't make it back on an agenda, so if the board's amenable, we'll put that on.
Yep.
Anything else? That's for you, Martin.
She's very useful.
You can only make it useful if you help. All right, future agenda items, any additional feedback or take anything off? Okay, we got a holding pattern?
Can I, can I, kind of along the lines of my concerns about Orchard School is also the small size of Chamberlain School. And I'm wondering if, you know, if Orchard continues to increase in size and we do have, if we do have capacity at Chamberlain, should we put on the future, we, I don't know if you want to call it redistricting, but redistributing the elementary schools per the, you know, basically shuffling the map? And I'm, I'm happy to be the lightning rod or the, or the source of criticism for it because I know people get emotional about it and they don't want their kids going, or they, they don't want us to tear apart the neighborhood and have kids on this side of the street go to this, this school and kids on the other side go to that school. But with the situations we've had to deal with at Orchard, we kind of need to get out in front of it.
Well, I think the discussion in the past has always been to see where the F-35 falls out and where the, where the upgrades at Chamberlain fall out because we didn't want to have a detailed discussion about redistricting or moving additional students there if we were concerned about health and safety issues there. And so I think, I think that's a conversation that's always kind of in the background. I'm just not sure where we are in terms of those changes. I think we'll know pretty shortly what it feels like to have F-35s at the airport and all of that, and that will be a piece of data that goes into that discussion.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think, I think you're right, Bridget. And from what I've been reading, that the news regarding the F-35 is what all the skeptics have feared about and that it's going to be louder, more frequent, and so on. But maybe we should be discussing this anyhow.
So, so again, I think Bridget's right on with where we are regarding Chamberlain. Again, we've put a lot of focus into the high school, middle school currently.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean that we just ignore elementaries. I think repointing populations, you know, we're currently in interim zoning in the city, so there's not a lot of new developments coming on. There are developments that are currently been, been approved and are being built out. And so as we look at enrollment projections through the demographer, and we did get a study from him based on where the new lots are going to be built, what that yields, and to look at that whole, so part of my work with my staff is to look at if we could repoint this, this population to a, to a different school, would that help alleviate, right? So those are some of the, some of the things that we have in play. That's much different, though, Alex, than redrawing the line to say, you currently go to this school, but next year we'd like, like you to go to that school, right? So to try to do this in a, in a very sensitive way, but also allows for some, some triggers, you know, to, to move those numbers around.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're, we're watching that.
So can we, should we put it on, can we put it on as a future agenda item?
You certainly can. You can look at elementary enrollments, I'm happy to do that. And you're going to get an enrollment update, but I think future enrollment ideas, you know, and watches, you know, probably is, is appropriate.
Yeah. So is it the board's view that we don't want to, don't want to put it on future agenda items, just stick with the enrollment update and then see how it goes?
Well, it's, it's on my radar, so.
Yeah, I know.
That's the kind of thing that, I mean, this is kind of like this parking lot for things that we might forget about or kind of, we're not going to forget about that issue. I mean, because that's one of the forefronts, right behind what we're doing with the high school, middle school, is, is that balancing of the, of the elementary school populations, particularly with what's going on at Chamberlain.
I think ultimately, we as a board should be looking to administration, be making recommendations on whether you want to call it predistricting or redistricting, but that has been an ongoing conversation. And the sequencing, as Bridget said, is really figure out the mitigation and health and safety of the current Chamberlain environment, and then kind of look at what the options would be, because we've got the O'Brien development, right?
Yep.
Right nearby especially.
So we'll keep it off the future agenda items, but it's certainly on David's radar, and we'll expect updates.
I mean, we've been getting updates, not every meeting, but frequently, and we should continue to have that.
All right, agenda item 15, consider the minutes of the meetings of August 21st, 23rd, 26th, and 28th. Any comments?
I mean, I was a little bit, Bridget, can we test out that he's not on time for the meeting on the 23rd, so I don't know what we care about adjusting the time.
Sorry, I didn't catch that one.
The 23rd was the Friday where Alec, or Brian called in during.
Oh, yeah, we had some times associated with that that you, we gave you the times, so we'll update that for the times.
That's supposed to be there.
That turned out to be an incredibly long meeting because we couldn't adjourn it till after convocation.
Yeah.
So I think also on August 26th, both Brian and I were also there, joined Bridget.
It's true. Yep.
Okay.
So Martin was there, and then Brian joined.
I came after the city pretty late.
Yeah.
I was, I was there.
No, oh, the 20th.
No, not the 26th, you were.
I think the date might not be quite right. The 26th was a Monday, and the 28th was the Wednesday. And the 28th, all of us were there.
Yes, okay, got it, yeah.
This says Monday, it should say Monday, the 26th at 7:00 PM.
Oh, yeah, it's Monday, yeah.
Oh, right, yeah, it's Monday.
And Martin was there, and Ann, yeah, Martin and Ann were there, and, and then Brian joined.
Like an hour and a half later.
Yeah.
That counts.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Okay, with changes on those two sets of minutes, correct? The 26th and the 23rd, with changes on those, those are approved. Consent agenda, we have two hires and we have a bid.
So the hires are filling some fractional pieces that are needed at the high school.
Any questions or comments?
Do we have a master plus 60?
We do not.
I hadn't seen that.
Yeah.
I was going to say, you can all have an MD or ABG or.
It's masters 30, step 10.
I think we did like 15, 20 years ago, right?
We did 40, 5, and 60, yeah. Sorry for that.
Okay, so would that change? Moving on to agenda item 17, AP orders 7, 8, and 9, any questions? All right, process-wise, do I have to adjourn this and go into executive session, or, I can't remember?
I think you can just adjourn to go into executive session, right?
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn to go into executive session for purposes of discussing negotiations and superintendent evaluation. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, move into executive session. Thanks.